... we enjoy and those who are willing to be all over the world tonight defending those freedoms. Give them peace and safety and protection as well. Thank you so much for your son, Jesus, and the blessing of his death on the cross. And we ask all this in his holy name. Amen.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us for a moment of silence.
You may be seated.
Thank you guys very much. Okay, we've got a special presentation I'm gonna do tonight, and I want to give you a little background. We have a bunch of active-duty Air Force personnel with us tonight, and we're gonna honor them in just a minute. They're with the Home Away From Home program. This program was started by Pam and Mike Clover several years ago as a result of a tragic incident on Tinker Air Force Base. And basically, they started opening up their home for first-term airmen who are away from home for the first time, miss momma's cooking, and the camaraderie that goes along with family. And this program has grown from just Tinker Air Force Base where Pam has presented this to just about every command in the United States Air Force and wanting to copy or enact a program at all the Air Force bases across the nation. Why this is important is 22 a day. 22 a day, we lose veterans and active-duty personnel to suicide. And filling this gap that they have and being away from home for the first time is tremendous. And they also mentor them, and they place these airmen with other families throughout the city and the surrounding area from Tinker. Well, recently, a couple of times, we have a mayor's program where we call in volunteers to help do stuff for our citizens such as paint houses, carry off debris and things of that nature so they don't get behind with code enforcement. And this group of airmen came in a couple of weeks ago and carried off a bunch of debris for several families and prevented them from having to assume the financial burden of doing that. So, guys and girls, would you come down to the front, please? And I want to, I want you guys to see these folks and recognize them. I'm gonna have letters of appreciation and certificates for each of them. I'm gonna give them to Mike here in a minute, and he can pass those out to you. But from the city of Midwest City and from the citizens of Midwest City, I can't thank you enough for the service that you provided to our citizens. It's greatly appreciated, and thank you for your service to our country. And thanks for being here tonight, and I want to make you go with the jury to hold counsel. So, Mike, Mike, come on in. Mike was the CEO of Tinker Air, at Tinker Federal Community for a number of years. Here's their certificates and letters. And they get points toward promotion for community service, so we'll make sure that they get those. So again, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, guys. Oh, I'll let the party take it. Did you get all of this one? Well, let's see if we can. Before, we should jump here, please. First, we'll be mayor. There we go. From the air points down after eleven o'clock. All right, so you guys have a good night, man. Have a good one. You too, man. You bet. See you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. If anybody has any doubt about our younger generation, you can put it at ease because these folks are the future leaders of our country, and they do a great job. So with that being said, Mr. Lyon, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. It's community announcements. I want to start, I'm gonna get out of order here a little bit, but I want to start with recognizing that we have a new deputy police chief, assistant police chief that has been named is Jonathan Goforth. Jonathan is here, stand up. Welcome, Jonathan. Many of you know Jonathan because of the time he's spent as a community action officer, and he has been an excellent IT person with all the information technology for the department, and he's risen through the ranks over time, and it's a well-deserved promotion. He has, what, 30 years or so for the city, and so he's very well-known in our community. It's a great choice by Chief Whibley. So, welcome Jonathan to his new role. Okay, let's go to our sales tax. As we talked about last month, our sales tax was down about 6.1 percent, and we equated that to the storm that we had come through that was like a hurricane, and it did all the damage on, throughout the city to the electric system, and we had a lot of businesses down for 48 hours at a minimum. And so this month, things bounced back as we expected, and we were up 2.17 percent. So, versus projection, we're up for the, about 2.13 again. And so that started to balance out last month. It'll take a couple months to balance what happened last month. But anyway, good news there for the city. Garage sale, community garage sales, the talk of the town right now. We have 300, as of about 5:00, we had, we have 334 houses signed up for garage sales coming up this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So Susan's very proud of that. She's been pushing this for a long time, and it's a great, great, or a great result for participation. So good job, Susan, and should bring a lot of people from the metro around the Midwest City, and our restaurants better have plenty of food in their freezers and be prepared because we're gonna have a lot of visitors in Midwest City. So we're looking forward to it. Get on the website. There's a map on the website, but we're also putting a list of addresses on the website so that you can figure out your pathway when you go around looking for bargains. Susan, you want to say anything?
I, again, just want to say thanks to Rilla Johnson. She asked and asked for this event to come, and so based on the enrollment, hopefully we're gonna have a very successful event. And it was noted on the webpage, the Midwest City Street Fest is happening at that time, and I'm hoping that maybe we can set something up to get folks who are out touring Midwest City at the citywide garage sale event to post some pictures of the places they go, not just for sales, but also the restaurants or businesses that they visit while we're in town, and so we can get to see the tour of Midwest City through other people's eyes.
Yep.
I think it'll be great. I appreciate all the efforts of everyone, including Dawn, who worked very diligently to get this event off the ground.
Careful, he's a city attorney. We don't want to be too nice to him. Okay. Thank you, yeah, thanks to staff. Staff's done a great job working together. GIS, marketing with Josh and Sarah Hancock's been involved and worked diligently, and yes, Dawn's even joined in, so anyway, good job, staff. All right.
Mr. City Manager, if I may, can I make an official request that as you give a report on so many important things that are going on in our city, if it may be possible to incorporate a violent crime report on a monthly basis? So we have those discussions and, as well, if that's a possible request.
What is it? I'm sorry.
A monthly violent crimes report on a month-to-month basis in this public setting. I know a lot of things are discussed on the news, but I think it would be helpful to have those discussions and those statistics.
We could put that under further information, statistical reports.
Well, I would, as a part of your announcement versus a document in the report, would that be possible? Kind of like the sales tax.
Yeah, let us talk about that. There's a lot of.
Thank you for considering.
Things announced about doing something like that. Okay, next on the agenda is the community survey. So this week, Midwest City residents will start seeing our 2024 Citizen Satisfaction Survey in their mailbox. Everyone who receives the survey is encouraged to answer the questions and return it using the provided postage-paid envelope. The Citizen Satisfaction Survey is an important tool that we use to measure how our residents feel about the work we're doing as a city and how they feel about their community. For residents who don't receive the survey in the mail, the same survey will be available online at MidwestCityOK.org starting Wednesday morning. It's very important that our residents return these surveys to our contractor, ETC Institute. This is the same organization that did our last survey in 2014, and they'll compile the data and provide reports so we can use this information for strategic planning. So looking forward to that. And lastly, we had a great turnout with 34 volunteers who came together to make a significant impact on our community. They were able to paint four houses. This came through our community action and neighborhood initiative program. These houses have been on the Restore Midwest City list for almost a year, so it was heartwarming to see them revitalized. Volunteers included city employees, their families, members from local churches, honor society students from Middel Schools, and so there was a lot of collaboration and community spirit and a lot of good work painting the four houses that we were able to do. So you can see some of the pictures. So good job to all those that participated, and heartfelt thank you. And with that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so the council members, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any council member requests to discuss an item or an item, if there cannot be a unanimous consent, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. The charity entertained a motion to approve except for item number nine by request of Ward Three, Councilwoman Maxwell, and be brought back for, and take no action on it. So charity entertained a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
With the exception of item nine?
With the exception of item nine.
I think I'm confused. This is not my person that I was recommending for that, so do I resent my request?
We'll just take no action, and we can.
Because that is not my person.
That's not your person?
Okay.
Well, let's take no action, and then we'll get that sorted out.
We're not table it, we're taking no action, so it can be redone and brought back.
Okay, because there are some concerns I have with the process of the bill. Not the person, because I don't know this person, but the process. So do we talk about the process, or do we table it? What do we do?
Well, let's table it for right now, and then talk about it offline, and we can get the process worked out. I know you're, I know your concerns, and we need to, you're absolutely right, we need to get them corrected.
Okay.
So motion to approve except for item number nine? Correct.
Correct.
Respectfully, if I could interject. So if we're gonna have a process conversation, in fairness, like, let's have that in some way. I'm not saying right now, but that, so we all understand what the process is. I mean, the way that I read this agenda item was, it was the mayor's appointee that he was putting in place. So if Councilwoman Maxwell, you recommended somebody for that position that's not the person who's listed on the agenda, then again, I guess my question is, as we've discussed before, what is the process when these, when these spots come open? Like, because I understand the mayor's appointee to be, again, the mayor is going to appoint that person, not like we are going to submit nominees for it? So if I'm misunderstanding, I'd.
Well, no, you're, I mean, it's a process that we need to get tweaked, and we need to have an agenda item on it and discuss it, because I'm not aware of this person either.
You're not aware of that person either?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. City Manager, is it possible to pull that item for discussion without taking action on it at this point?
Oops, I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry. You said city manager, I'm very sorry.
I'm sorry, city attorney.
I'm very sorry. Obviously, any item can be pulled for discussion. Now, what is not on the agenda at this time is to discuss any type of processes. So as the mayor just identified, if we want to have a discussion on what a process will be for city council members to nominate individuals for various boards, that would need to be a separate and distinct agenda item. That hasn't been publicly noticed yet, so we can't go down that road today. Could Ms. Schwartz be discussed today? Yes. And could she be pulled off and done as an individual proceeding? Yes, but it sounds like nobody knows who this person is, and.
Well, I do know her.
Wrong first name.
Yes, wrong first name.
See, we've got several mistakes in this, so once again.
I'm sorry.
Obviously, we can't discuss the process, it's not an agenda item. We need to bring it back, we need to take no action on this particular item and move forward with the rest of the consent agenda.
Can I do a follow-up question, Mayor? I'm sorry.
No sweat.
Technically, since the item is to make an appointment of an individual, wouldn't the scope of the body, the mission, and the process fall under that category as questions that could be posed during that appointment process?
This, this individual person?
Yeah.
Sure. The entire process as a whole? No.
Okay. All right, well, we'll just.
I have a question. I have a question.
I apologize for that. I truly do.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we said we're gonna bring it back and discuss it later. What is later?
Next council meeting.
Okay, next council meeting. Okay. And Ms. Schwartz, Janet Schwartz, I'll get back with you.
As will I.
And something else we've talked about, that at the strategic planning meeting, we're gonna talk about these committees in more detail, so I don't know, I mean, we're gonna do that in November, so I don't know if we want to just wait till then, but we can.
We'll have to discuss that.
Yeah, okay.
So I do have a motion, and I have a second.
I have a second? Oh, somebody's second? Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. And now we move into discussion items. Discussion item number one, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion item one, PC 2181, public hearing discussion, consideration of possible action of approval, the final plat of Glenhaven commercial for the property described as a tract of land lying in the southwest quarter of section 34, township 12, north range two west of the Indian Meridian. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. This is a final plat application for the commercial lot at the Glenhaven Development. It is a single lot of about one and a three, one and a third acres in total, and is zone C3, community commercial. The applicant is aware that, you know, at the time that they submit for a building permit, that site-proof screening will be required along any property boundary that is adjacent to residential. We found that the platting question met all of our requirements in the subdivision and development regulations. We followed all state and local notification requirements. Sorry. Sorry, is that a little better?
Oh, much better.
Okay, sorry. We did follow all state and local notification requirements, and we did not receive any calls or emails in favor or opposition of the application. We do recommend approval of this application, and the planning commission also recommended approval unanimously.
Mr. Summers, I have one question.
Yes.
Nowhere in the documents that I read did it make any mention of the fact that this developer has agreed, at least verbally, to give an easement for a right-turn lane on Glenhaven. Now, that's still in the works, I assume.
Yes.
And does it need to be formalized, or can it be formalized, or are we just taking that for granted now as we move forward?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good question, and I think it is shown on the, on the plat, but I guess Brandon will.
Sorry, we worked with the developer, and they already dedicated the easement or the necessary right-of-way for that right-turn lane. So when it's recorded, it will give us the necessary room to make that right turn.
That's good. I just wanted to make sure it was official and not just a handshake deal.
Yeah.
Not that Joel's handshake would be worth a million dollars, and I wouldn't doubt it for a minute, but I just wanted to make it formal.
Yeah, as soon as they record it, we'll have the room necessary for that right-turn bay.
Thank you.
So to clarify, you have a signed but unrecorded copy of the deed for the easement?
It's not part of the deed, it's the plat itself. They're dedicating it within the plat, so as soon as it's recorded, it's ours. It's not, it's part of the right-of-way, so it's not an easement itself.
Okay, so what, as soon as what is recorded? The plat is recorded?
The plat, yes. That's the instrument, the legal instrument.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Mr. Summers? Charity entertain a motion.
I make a motion to.
I'm sorry?
You're welcome.
This is a public discussion, does anyone have anything to bring before the council concerning this matter? I told her I wouldn't forget it, and I did. Hearing or seeing none, charity entertain a motion. What, okay, what are you squirming about? Okay. Charity entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve this item.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Sometimes this gets a little confusing up here, so bear with me. Item number two, Mr. Lyon.
PC 2182, public hearing discussion, consideration of possible action of approving the final plat of Glenhaven for the property described as a tract of the land lying in the southwest quarter of section 34, township 12, north range two west of the Indian Meridian. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. This application is for the residential component that is related to the matter we just heard. The applicant is proposing a final plat that would subdivide the lot into 41 residential lots with a total of just under 10 acres. The plat does also meet our requirements within the subdivision regulations, and they would have to follow all the guidelines that they proposed with the PUD as far as the residential development on the site, you know, which sites can be single-family, which sites may or may not end up as duplexes or townhomes. All state and local notification requirements were followed with this application, and at this time, staff has, or at least planning staff, has not received any calls or emails in favor or opposition of the application. The applicant is working to install a new outlet box in the detention basin on the development to address some concerns that staff had had about some of the stormwater runoff in the area, and the applicant is also working to acquire a downstream stormwater easement for dedication to the city. So we would recommend that approval of the final plat would be contingent upon those two things, the first being that the outlet box be installed to the satisfaction of the city engineer, and the second being the attainment of that easement, that downstream easement for the city. This was heard by the planning commission, they unanimously recommended approval of this item as well.
Any questions, Mr. Summers?
There is one. The flooding in the area still remains a major concern. However, this weekend, we had a substantial amount of rain, and I was pleased to see that this, the flooding in the street was minimal. The work that has been done there is good, but more remains. We still have a drain problem, a drain that's plugged, and I want it to go on the record that at this point, after we, if we approve this this evening, Joel, the developer, will go on about his business, and it will be the city that assumes the responsibility for future flooding if that drain is ultimately not fixed. And my understanding is, I know that it's going to be part of an ongoing study of wastewater disposal, but that drainage ditch is one that is ultimately gonna have to have some work, and there will, or there will still be problems for the neighbors in that area.
Yes.
There are still strong concerns by those neighbors, and I understand their concerns, and we're gonna, we will ultimately deal with them, but I personally believe that the developer, in this case, has done all he can to mediate that situation, and the rest of it is gonna be incumbent upon us. So with that said, I would make a recommendation to approve.
Just a minute, Mike. This is a public hearing, I don't want to forget it again, I get in trouble. This is a public hearing, does anyone have anything to bring before the council concerning this particular item?
We also approved, we also approved on the consent agenda a couple maintenance bonds on these two items. Five and six will help on that, correct? The maintenance bonds? Brandon, or Brandon, can you answer that?
Yes, at the consent, we accepted those maintenance bonds. Those maintenance bonds are basically accepting the work that those contractors did, so we have some bonds, but those are for workmanship. have some bonds, but those are for workmanship. But that will help us, if it, if workmanship causes a problem, correct? If workmanship causes a problem, yes.
Go ahead with your motion, Mr. Thompson.
I make a motion that this agenda item be approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Item number three, Mr. Lyon.
PC 2183, public hearing discussion, consideration and possible action of approving a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from single-family detached residential land use to high-density residential land use, and in order to restrict from single, or redistrict from single-family detached residential R-six to high-density residential RHD for the property located at nineteen oh five and nineteen nineteen North Douglas Boulevard. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. This is an, an application that, as Tim mentioned, has two components. The first part of the request is to amend the comprehensive plan from a single-family detached residential land use to a high-density residential land use, and the second part would be to rezone the subject property from an R-six, single-family residential district to the RHD district. The subject property is, is currently undeveloped. The conceptual plan that the applicant submitted with their application shows six total buildings with a hundred and ninety-eight residential units. If the rezoning is approved, because the request at this time is for a, sort of a base zoning, zone change application, if the rezoning was approved, you know, any of the uses that are listed in the RHD zoning district would be permitted by right on the site. They would have to follow all of the, the guidelines that the R-six, or the RHD district lays out. They would not necessarily be guaranteed that they could do a hundred and ninety-eight units if, for some reason, because of parking or other considerations, if they could not fit those units on the site. But it also means that, you know, they are not necessarily restricted to a maximum of a hundred and ninety-eight units, you know, should others develop the site, and they are able to fit more units on the site. So, you know, there are, there are some, some items to, to weigh when, when considering approving our medium and high-density residential districts, in, when it's outside of a PUD or an SPUD application. The comprehensive plan portion of the application, there's a lot of factors that we typically weigh when examining whether or not to amend the comprehensive plan. You know, the future land use map is always the first thing, you know, that we would typically look at when advising an applicant about whether or not their proposal is in conformance with the long-range plans of the community. You know, in, in many cases, the, the future land use map doesn't necessarily match what applicants are looking for, and then we, we look to other parts of the comprehensive plan to see if it makes sense to amend, to amend the, the plan to match the request that the applicant is, is looking to do. And in that, and in particular, as I, as I note in the staff report, there are a series of evaluation questions on page four dash twenty-three of the comprehensive plan, there's a series of five questions where we examine, you know, whether or not the, the land use that they're proposing is, is better for the community than the one proposed by the comprehensive plan. You know, we look at, you know, what the impacts might be, and try to examine things of that nature when we make those considerations. In addition, there is, there are sort of citing guidelines, if you will, contained within the comprehensive plan that we would look at when people propose high-density residential uses. And those typically fall along the lines of looking at whether or not, you know, the site is located along an arterial road to provide adequate transportation, whether or not they're proposing to meet our requirements as far as, you know, the masonry requirements and things of that nature. And so, there, there is a lot to weigh when, when considering, I guess in summation, there's a lot to consider when we, when we think about whether or not to amend the comprehensive plan. In this case, staff does recommend approval of, of amending the comprehensive plan. We felt like the site in question did meet enough of those citing requirements, while it would represent certainly a change in the character for the property owners in that area, in, in most cases. One residential use, whether a medium or high-density, and, and single-family residential can often coexist, you know, on adjoining properties. A lot of the, the land use characteristics can be the same, even if the visual, in, the visual changes are not, the visual character is, is, is different. You know, a lot of the hours of, I guess, operation, if you will, people tend to sleep around the same hours, regardless of whether they're in an apartment or not, people tend to go to work around the same times, whether they're in an apartment or a single-family residence. So, we do find that a lot of the land use compatibility, compatibility is, is fairly similar.
Let me interject.
Yes.
A question really quickly, Matt. So, it's my understanding that the residents in the surrounding area that were notified, as is required, are, have expressed almost universal opposition to this proposal.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, explain to me, not that this council has a history of heating to the residents in the area before development goes through, but explain to me why does staff is recommending that this item go forward in spite of almost a universal opposition by surrounding residents?
I mean, obviously, we, we lean towards looking at those citing requirements that are in the comprehensive plan. Obviously, the neighbors have concerns of their own that, that come from their, their lived experience in that area. It's not always possible for staff to, to know those lived experiences, if you will, when, when writing the staff report. So, even though our conclusions may be different, I'm not saying that the concerns that the neighbors have are not valid, I'm just providing a land use analysis based on the evaluation criteria that's in the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Summers, I have a question.
Wasn't there a petition signed by most of the residents?
Yes.
And was those, were those signatures verified and certified? And was it enough to require a supermajority vote?
Yes, that is, that is correct. We did receive signatures from property owners within three hundred feet, that was fifty, that represented fifty percent or more of the area. We verified the ownership of those signatures, and we verified that those were all within the three hundred foot area. So, yes, it does require a three-fifths favorable vote in order to approve the zone change before you.
Thank you for verifying that.
Are we, are we looking at this change based on builders who want the change? Because I'm hearing that the residents don't want the change. Okay, did you not hear me?
I, I can hear you, yes.
So, are, are we considering this change because of the builders? Or, because it sounds like the community don't want it? And third, do we have a need for that many single, single residency at this place, at this time?
Those are good questions. Yeah, the application is, is before us because it was part of the application submitted with the rezoning. It's not something, staff did not, I guess, bring the, the request for the change in the comprehensive plan, it was part of the application.
Mr. Summers, I called personally every apartment complex within two miles of that, and they all have vacancies. So, I don't see how there's a great need in Midwest City at this time for a hundred and seventy-eight new apartments. You mentioned the comprehensive plan, that, I think there's a citizen in the audience tonight who read that comprehensive plan about eight years ago, and based on the information in that comprehensive plan, purchased land and built a house in that neighborhood, because it was planned for single-family residences.
Yeah.
And now, we're telling him, eight years later, we're just gonna arbitrarily change that comprehensive plan, and you say it's for the betterment of the community. And I have yet to hear a, a good argument for how, in any way, this is a betterment for our community. Is the builder, is the developer here, would they be willing to entertain questions about how they feel this is somehow a betterment for our community?
Before we bring the builder, can I ask Mr. Sum- Summers a question on that?
Yeah.
So, I, I wanna follow up what on, on the question Councilwoman Eads posed to you, and I don't really think I got a clear answer. You refer to the land use, and, based on the notations that you have here, because I would really like to have a better understanding of what staff is weighing when they make these determinations. As far as the notation you have here, it says the proposed change is neither better nor worse than what is recommended by the further land use plan. It also goes on to say that the proposal could impact the residential areas in a negative manner if the property falls into despair. Given the realities that we, as a council, have experienced in this city, and I recall the dilapidation issue with Midwest Point, I mean, what guarantee do we have, and how do we heed to the concerns of the residents who reside there? And I, I also saw notations that the presumption is that more residents in this municipality trinkles down to more sales tax, but we, I mean, what scientific research or report are we looking at that guarantees that if we have two hundred new additional residents in this city, that they are guaranteed to go to Crest Foods or to Walmart located in this, or we just hope, is that a wishful thought?
Yeah. I, I mean, there, there's not necessarily a scientific study that goes along with that, it's the, the, I guess, the location in question, there is retail nearby, and, and most people, not all, but most people do tend to, to shop at the, the areas that are closest to them out of convenience.
So, I guess, going back to your, you're using the land use and the comprehensive plan as the source in determining your feedback as, on behalf of the entire staff, so, I, I don't see where in your own notations, the determination of the staff was, that it's the better idea to proceed with this development. I guess I'm looking for the reasoning behind it.
Yeah.
By staff.
Yeah. I mean, it, I guess, when, when I weigh the, the five questions that you, that you reference, in, in my opinion, it came up fair, fairly neutral either way, I mean, in general. I, I think that there are quality developments that are, you know, multifamily, I think there are quality developments that are single-family, and the opposite is also, also true sometimes. So, I don't necessarily weigh it, I guess, based on, on the, the type of housing that's proposed. And so, sort of in the absence of, of really feeling a strong consideration one way or another, on those five questions, I looked to the citing requirements, so what did the comprehensive plan say we should consider when weighing new sites for high-density residential development? And the site in question did seem to meet those qualifications.
Thank you. I have one follow-up question in regards to that. When staff gets these types of applications, for example, do you guys take the time and say, hey, you know, we have, for example, the, the current land space where Midwest Point is, where we've gated it up, and there is a dilapidated building that's become a sore side, and I don't know what the police department would report regard, in regards to criminal activity. Do we refer them, for example, and say, hey, there is a property sitting, you know, down the street that is zoned appropriately and is in crisis, and that the residents in this body would maybe even be more grateful to see renovations, or, do you guys partake in directing them for alternative sites?
We, we do on occasion make recommendations about other sites that might be, you know, zoned more appropriately, or, you know, already ready for a particular use. In many cases, though, the applicant comes to us with a property in mind, they may already be under contract, or, or things of that nature.
Matt, now it's my turn.
Yeah.
And this is, it's a result of the report that you made, which is pretty detailed, which, the thing that grabbed me the most was that, two, two things, it said that, you noted that if the rezoning is approved, you're not sure that the proposal that they put together could even fit in that area, which I don't wanna, I would not wanna give them a false sense that we're gonna approve this, and then your project that you've tentatively given to us is gonna fit in there, and then you also just said a minute ago that they could, we don't necessarily, we won't be able to hold them to a hundred and ninety-eight, they could actually go above that, which concerns me because in your report, on page six, under the fire marshal part, it talks about that anything over a hundred dwelling units has to have two, two separate fire apparatus access routes. And on the map, it shows one on Douglas Boulevard. Well, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not a rocket scientist, but I could see that if they added above a hundred and ninety-eight, or even, even now at a hundred and ninety-eight, they're gonna have to have a second way in, and second way out. And the second way in and second way out is gonna be on Seventeenth Street. That's, I mean, that's the only place for it to really go. So, and they can say that it's not gonna go there, but there's nothing that we can do when, if we approve this tonight, that's where it's gonna end up. I mean, that's, so, and, that's one of the concerns the residents have got, is the traffic, and that's.
Yeah.
I see, and I may be totally off-base, and I may be totally wrong, and I know this is just a zoning deal, but I think, I think that to get that many apartments in that small area, they're gonna have to put a second entrance exit on Seventeenth Street, which is totally against what the residents over there, that's what they've been worried about. So, that's my two cents.
I would also just say that I have concerns about this proposal from the sheer standpoint of our recent experience here in Midwest City, with an out-of-state entity owning an apartment complex, that apartment complex falling into disrepair, and the extreme difficulty that we had trying to get that situation remedied for those citizens of Midwest City. So, there's a number of problems, some of which Pat just outlined for us, and I don't know who's signed up to talk for this public hearing.
Actually, it's mine. This is a public hearing, and several of you have a, have signed up to speak on this particular issue. So, Ms. Pitts?
Before we.
Do you want, do you wanna hear from the applicant first, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Hear from the applicant first, Mr. Mayor?
Before we, before we move into the people who are physically here, I, I wanted to finish my thought, if I could, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
I, what I was saying is, I don't know how many people have signed up to speak, but I do know that I have been contacted by a citizen in the affected area, expressing her displeasure, and a number of reasons for her displeasure with this proposed project. She was unable to be present tonight, as were the couple that I believe originated the petition against this matter. So, I just wanted to share that, that in addition to, if we're looking at numerosity, my point is, not everybody who is opposed to this project was able to be here tonight, but we, we have received contact from others for the knowledge of the council, other than those who are gonna speak to us tonight.
Point of order. Could you please tell me what the heck numerosity means?
The number.
I'm just kidding, it was a very good word.
You're a college professor. Okay, we'll hear from the applicant, the applicant here. Could you state your name and address for the, for the record, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brad Chouab with Cornerstone Housing Group, two zero nine South Nineteenth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one zero two. I have a quick PowerPoint, I, I promised it'd be ten minutes or less, so I, hopefully I won't take too much of your time. Appreciate all the comments. Just wanted to start off by saying that we're extremely excited about this location and this opportunity. We appreciate the staff support and support we have received from Planning Commission, and thank you for your, your consideration. I'd like to spend just a couple minutes talking about why we like this site, why it's a great location for high-density residential housing, and why we would love to make a, a sizable investment in Midwest City. Early estimates were about fifty-eight million dollar capital investment in the community. See if I can do this. There's high demand for housing, high market demand, and there's also community need, even though there are several multifamily communities in Midwest, Midwest City currently. What this graph shows, the multifamily developments, I think there's twenty-two on here, I might have missed one or two, but as you can see, you had quite a bit of growth between nineteen sixty and nineteen ninety, and then that stopped, and there's been a couple since. There's one that's under construction now, that's not on this, I couldn't find the information for it. The, the dark horizontal blue lines, a hundred and ninety-eight units, that's the size of our proposed project. As you can see, it's really close to average size. As you can see, it's really close to average size in, in the community. And we think because of the age, the average age of multifamily in Midwest City is roughly 1979, and that may be contributing to some of the reasons why we're seeing some vacancies in those, in those developments. Folks can live elsewhere where there's new apartments, probably for somewhat similar rents. So, we believe this is also contributing to what we've seen first time in Midwest City's history of flat population growth. We realize that your permits are down for various reasons that are legitimate, and that will change. But nonetheless, it's important for this trajectory, trajectory to change, where we see, from a community development standpoint, you want to see more housing units come online, and you want to see your, your, your age, your inventory get a little newer, in line with market taste. This map here kind of speaks to why, why here. And I'm sure you're all interested in this. The, the center there with the yellow outlines, 11.1 acres. This site has everything you need for a higher-density residential development. Within one mile, you've got shopping, parks, all the schools, except for Rogers, which is just north of, of, of the high school up there. Fire station, and what's really important to us is there's two transit stops. We think of this area as kind of being somewhat rural, but it has all the urban infrastructure needed to support high-density residential development. I would also like to speak about Soldier Creek Industrial Park, often heard referred to as Skip. I know the city's made a large investment recently. American Glass is coming in due to the hard work and efforts of, of council and staff to, to successfully attract that employer manufacturer to, to the community. We're proposing 198 units of workforce housing, along with your ability to attract Centrillium. We're ideally positioned to provide workforce housing for that development and the additional future growth of the Skip Industrial Park. Based on Google Maps, that's about a five-minute drive from the site to, to Skip. Everyone knows there's a connection between workforce housing and economic development, and we're excited to provide that piece of it.
Can I interject a question, please?
Sure.
So, based on the site location and your proposed 198 units, I'm assuming that you are considering, and you're talking about workforce housing, workforce housing, excuse me, that you're anticipating that some of the tenants that you will have are going to be families, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And families with children, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, have you, it looks like to me that, based upon your large yellow circle, Tel Star Elementary, for example, which is not a Middel School, but an Oklahoma City school, would be the target elementary school for kids from this development, if the development were to be approved, is that correct?
I believe the feeder school is Willowbrook, in this case, even though Tel Star is closer.
Okay. I'm sorry, say it again.
Tel Star is closed.
Okay. So, it's Willowbrook?
Willowbrook.
Which is still an Oklahoma City school, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the whole, you're, you're right. The property's in Oklahoma School District.
Okay. Well, let me go ahead and finish my question if I can. Sorry. But my question goes to, have you had communication with the Oklahoma City School District with regard to the idea of kerplunking a development down in this location that would result in a certain anticipated number of students going to join that particular Willowbrook, in this case, elementary school?
No, ma'am, we have not.
Any of the schools?
None of the schools at this point.
Okay.
And I, and I'd really like to add, on behalf of many parents in Ward Five, our hope is in the future to return our kids to the Middel school system. And the concept of adding additional students as we go begging and pleading to Middel, I don't know that that's going to help the fight that so many parents are hopeful for here in the near future. The other thing is, I brought up Midwest Point. Mr. Chouab, we had a conversation early on, I think before you even took your plans to City Hall, when you were initially looking at this, and I advised you to work closely with City Hall, because they make these decisions mainly. And I will tell you, I've always been an advocate for affordable housing, because, as you know, the state and nationally, we are in a crisis.
Yes.
I will share with you, though, some of the price ranges that you had, for my community is not necessarily affordable. For my community, we are struggling to pay rent in the $800 range. $1,100 to $1,400 for a family in my community is above our, our ability in a lot of cases. The other thing is, I brought up the Midwest Point Apartments. Are you aware of that property that is located on the corner of Northeast Tent and Air Depot, and it's within a three-minute drive, I would argue, to the Skip Park in Mid-America? And I, I think our community as a whole would thank you if you could uplift that corner instead of, as my colleague, Mr. Thompson, Councilman Thompson stated, is, many of our residents here, they came to Midwest City, they're long-term residents, where they opted to buy their properties, particularly in this neighborhood, had some promises. For them, it is a rural feel. It's beautiful, right? And so, I think it's, it's, and I even heard two residents, Councilwoman Ead, say, I will leave if I lose the sense of the country that I have out here. And so, we don't want to displace our, you know, taxpayers who've been good residents in, in order to bring hoped new residents into our community. Have you looked at the other property by any chance? And is that, is, would that even be viable as, as far as an alternative?
No, we have not looked at that, and, but yes, I am aware of it, just recently. It came to our attention that that was in the press, and of course, we took a look at it. But we have not looked at it from an investment standpoint, or if the property's even available. I have done no due diligence on it, so it'd be hard to speak towards, you know, if it's a viable-
Would you be willing to consider it long-term? And maybe connect with their city?
My, my boss and president of Cornerstone Housing Group's with me, Bobby Joe Lucas, certainly we'd take that consideration. But we, you know, we get invited to, to develop in communities, you know, because affordable housing is such a need everywhere. You know, we really like this site, but I understand your concerns, and understand there may be some other opportunities. So, we'd like to continue talking about this and consider this, this other opportunity, perhaps.
Go ahead with your presentation, thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, briefly.
And I, I do want to echo, just briefly, this is a sidebar, how welcome everyone's made me feel in Midwest City, including the people we've talked to, our neighbors, who've told us straight up that they're against the project. It's not often when you talk to people who are against something, it's as emotional as this, but still treat you with a great deal of respect. So, really appreciate that. This particular slide is lifted, or is a clip from your comprehensive plan. This is your thoroughfare plan. And one of the comprehensive plan requirements is that a high-density residential building be located next to a primary arterial, which, which this site is. As you know, a primary arterial is the city's largest road in your, in your street classification or your street system. It's designed to take a lot of traffic at higher speeds. This is your zoning map, and the only reason I have this in here is just to show that there is precedent for high-def, high, high-density residential next to single-family. The dark bordered properties are high, high-density residential, HDR, or, and you can see most of those but single-family, or, or, or six in, in the yellow. There's actually high-density residential to our northwest. That's East Park. To our northeast, that's a PUD, but that's zoned for RMD, which is medium-density residential. And as you go down the North Doug, Douglas Boulevard, you can see that there's, there's high-density residential next to single-family. So, there's certainly precedent for, for this type of land use pattern. And in our opinion, it'd be appropriate at, at this location, too, if, if you would, if you would agree with this. The site itself is 11.1 acres. As I mentioned earlier, it has all the infrastructure needed to support high-density residential. And in that case, it's, it's almost shovel-ready. We got water and sewer, that's the blue and green line, lines running north-south into North Douglas Boulevard right away. And we got two embark transit stops currently programmed south of 17th and nine, and north of 19th Street. Everything needed to support higher-density residential. All the infrastructure and services needed are currently at the site. This is the, the preliminary site plan. This is way early. This is going to, this, this would change if we get, if we're forcing to get the rezoning approved. We showed a similar version to, to the neighbors. We had a neighborhood meeting on June 27th. At that meeting, we proposing 225 units, and we did have a curb cut or a driveway on 17th Street. And the neighbors, as mentioned here earlier, did, did tell us that that was too many units, and they didn't want traffic on 17th Street. We reduced the number of units from 225 down to 198, and we removed the, the curb cut on, on 17th Street. By doing that, by going from 225 to 198 units, we actually comply with the RMD district. That particular district allows up to 19.8 units per acre, and I think we're at like 17.8 at, at 198 units. Some communities allow us to have a larger entrance, kind of like a Boulevard entrance, with wider lanes for fire, fire access instead of two, two curb cuts. We haven't talked to the fire marshal about that opportunity, but there's a chance we could get a second curb cut on North Douglas, kind of between the building in, in the middle at the right, and the building at the very bottom. There's space for another curb cut there if, if the driveway spacing works. This is just a preliminary elevation drawing. We build really nice-looking buildings. Cities require, requires 85% masonry materials. This will have 100% masonry materials, will, will exceed the city's standards as part of our commitment to enhance the site and, and the neighborhood. And in this case, we got stone, hardy board siding, shake shingles, or a Class A shingle on the roof. And, and we also want to have a innovative site design as well that buffers the, yes.
Where will the elevators be located?
These are, these are stairs.
So, a three-story building with no elevators?
Three stairies with stairs, that's right. Yeah. Breezeways with stairwells. Also, the site will be landscaped, will meet all your landscaping requirements, will enhance the corridor image, street trees, will also put a lot of landscaping and buffering next to the single-family adjacent to us. Really thank you for this opportunity to present our proposal. We have a whole team here. If you have any more questions, we have our civil engineer, Mark Grubbs. Yes.
Your, Cornerstone's a big company, and you've got several subdivisions. Beacon Management, I believe, is one?
Beacon Management.
Will Beacon be the manager of this property as well?
Yes, sir. We're, we're vertically integrated in that regard. We have our own management company, and yeah, it'll be-
You're aware that their reviews online are not very good?
Uh-
Could I share one with you, and you can answer?
Yeah, please do.
It must be great to work for you guys, since nobody gets anything done. Bedbugs, flooding, roaches, you name it, and their apartments have it. How would you answer that?
I, I don't have an answer for that, and I didn't see the particular comment, although I totally believe it's, it's there. Bobby, do you have?
Yeah. Not familiar. I mean, I would think that's the exception versus the norm. We have eight products, or eight communities in, in Oklahoma, going back to 2003 is our oldest. I think that's in Ada. And, but we have Norman. They're all close, and they're very well-maintained.
I think Yukon is one of them, right?
Yukon's our, is our newest. It's currently under construction. It's almost open.
And I think your business plan is generally low-income housing around the country, but in Yukon specifically, your target audience is individuals making 60% or less of the average income in that community, is that correct?
Area median income, which is a, a income, median income of a family of, of four.
So, what, what your plan is, is to use federal incentives for low-income housing and attract low-income tenants, correct?
The, the funding mechanisms is tax credits. We award the tax credits, and we sell those to help underwrite the, the construction. There's no subsidy. The rents aren't subsidized.
So, in, in all deference to your wonderful presentation, we don't have to approve this. And in order to approve it, we need to trust that you will improve our community.
Yes, sir.
I'm not seeing that.
Okay.
I'm not seeing that you have convinced the neighbors, and you certainly haven't convinced me, that the plans that you have here will bring anything of great value to Midwest City, although $58 million is, is a huge deal, and we don't want to turn that down. We want the jobs, we want the building. But that particular piece of land, a developer right up the street is putting 76 new homes on a site just about that same size. 76 new single-family residences. In that case, it's on 15 acres. You've got 11 acres. So, let's say it's 60 new homes. How would you rate the value to Midwest City of 60 new single-family homes versus 198 apartments with no elevator to the third floor?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the, the question.
The relative value of 198 apartments to 60 single-family homes-
I see.
-on the same piece of land, which, in your opinion, would be more valuable to the city and the citizens of Midwest City?
It depends what your goals are. I mean, it's, if you give me a very specific question-
Well, I think we've set our goal out a long time ago in the planning documents, in the comprehensive plan. So, you're asking us to change that.
Yes, sir.
So, in order to change our goal, and then change our comprehensive plan, it's incumbent upon you to give us a good reason to do that, is all I'm saying.
Yeah. No, that's fair. Real quick, if I may, I know we're getting a bit long here. That property had, there's actually two properties, it's 1905 and 1919, North Douglas Boulevard. Both addresses had at one time, single-family homes on them. Both have been demolished. 1905 was demolished in 2010, according to public records. 1919 was demolished later. I'm not sure when. The fact is that those properties have been on the market, and they haven't sold for single-family, based on your, your current policy. So, the question is, why? Why is that? And part of the reason that I can think of is, the land use policy is no longer consistent with the market. It's no longer highest and best use. And I know you're going to go through a comprehensive planning process, we're going to talk about these things. In my personal opinion, those properties probably won't be developed as single-family residential. The market doesn't prefer, prospective home buyers don't prefer to buy houses that front on, on busy streets like, like that. And that's part of the reason why. There may be others as, as well. So, it'll be interesting, when you go through your comp plan process, when you look at these types of properties, you've got a lot of wonderful arterial streets with a bunch of single-family loaded product on it. It'll be interesting to see if you keep that policy moving forward, or if there needs to be a shift. Typically, single-family next to busy arterial, those are the ones that generally get converted to rentals faster than houses and interior on, on local streets. And I think that's the case, certainly across the street from us on 1905 and 1919. Probably the majority of those houses are rentals. I can prove that.
And it seems to be-
And it seems to be kind of a trend on a national level, on national level. Unfortunately, the American dream of homeownership, which used to be a reality for so many generations before mine, is not tangible anymore.
Yeah.
And while there's a trend to move towards rental, which is, that works, I had to rent, right? But the concept of empowering individuals to get into their first owned home, I think would be preferable, any of us would opt for that than to be renters. And so I, I think, I hope that this means, and I know we have some programs here that help first-time homebuyers. And so the hope is that we can invest in that, not just for the sake of our city, but also for empowering other fellow Americans with that s- security that comes with homeownership and the sense of pride that goes with it. And I understand, like, you, the industry you're in may work great and again, that other proper location may be fit because then we're not disturbing this community that exists there, which is very rare in Midwest City where we have lots of land behind a home 'cause our homes are compact, like the one I live in. Um, but I, if, if, and I know we've got some public comments, I don't know, or-
We do.
Yeah, we need to hear those before we can make an ocean on this.
Ms. Wad, thank you for, for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time, appreciate it.
Point of personal privilege.
Yes, ma'am. We're hereby recessed for five minutes.
No, I know, I just don't agree with, or I don't agree with the government.
I don't know why I say five minutes, those things are never five minutes long, so.
I like your optimism.
It wasn't close.
I have to be optimistic.
We're gonna make you Sergeant Holmes.
Okay.
That's not a bad idea. Based on your uh, addresses, uh, I'm gonna assume that you're here to talk about this current item. So uh, Ms. Pitts, you wanna come to the podium? Please state your name and address for us.
Sherry Pitts, eighty-eight oh-one Northeast Seventeenth Street. One of the three-hundred-feet residents around this apartment complex proposal. I just wanna say thank you. You all have read and heard us. Uh, obviously, our emails got to you and we, as the citizens, appreciate that to know that we're being listened to. And I think you have covered a lot of the things that needed to be covered tonight and I don't think I'm gonna rehash all that, I'm sure you don't wanna hear it, but there is some good reasons. We have stated them, you all have spoke about them, and this is just not the time or place for this type of a complex. There are so many others issues and places that this could be better for. So I just wanted to come and thank all of you. Our ball is in your park, help us, help us on this, please. And if you need us to beg, I'm here, I'm here. I'm representing a lot of people tonight that couldn't be here and I've been to every meeting because this is our heart, our heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pitts. I'm going to take a shot at this, Mr. Hurt? Your hand rating is as good as mine.
Thanks.
Please state your name and address, please.
Tom Hunt, eighty-eight sixteen Northeast Seventeenth. I live just diagonal of the property. I think you all have covered everything, I think you got a good grasp of how we feel about it, but this is not a good place for this. Um, you know, if it was single-family, I'd be all for it, if they were creating jobs, I'd be all for it, but this is not a winner for the city, or definitely not where we're at. So, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Hunt. Ms. Johnson?
Gina Johnson, nineteen thirteen Northeast Nineteenth. I'm on the adjacent streets, right in front of it. It will create quite the traffic jam for us. Plus, on one of his proposals, it says that they will build a high fence to hide any trash. Well, at the end of our street, we have a senior citizen center with all those houses. They built a wrought iron fence. You know why? 'Cause they don't have the trash, they don't have anything to hide. So, also, we had houses that had burned over there and as soon as they did, because of the way the street is, it's not wide enough, everything was blocked. Of course, the house burning is the most important thing, but it created quite the problem 'cause one of the days when it happened, my husband was going to the hospital to have knee replacement. We couldn't get out. He missed his, he missed his surgery because it was blocked. So there's all kinds of issues with this, it's not a good thing. Plus, right down the street, right across the street from Crest, it's some property that's already zoned for business or something else. He says this hasn't been u- used or sold, there hasn't been a sign-up that, that long for it. And as we all know, the economy sucks right now. And maybe that's a point in his favor, don't know, but nobody can afford those apartments that he's talking about. I own my house, I've been there for over forty years. I don't want this at the end of my street. It's gonna bring in stuff that we don't need and we don't want. He, as far as him saying that the people on Douglas don't own their homes, I have a homeowner right here, Loyal, he owns two of those houses, they're not rent homes. Jose, back here, he owns the house, it's not a rent house. So he's mistaken on that fact. We don't want it, we don't need it, there's other places for them to go. Thank you. And thank y'all for being so kind.
Thank you, ma'am, for being here, we appreciate it. I'm sorry, I can't read this one, but eighty-eight twenty Northeast Seventeenth? I found somebody worse than mine.
Well, I tried.
Hey, you did, you did well.
Scott Walker.
And your address again?
Eighty-eight twenty Northeast Seventeenth.
I know it's redundant, go ahead, sir.
Well, we can start off with the flooding problem.
Yes, sir.
Now, since nineteen-eighty, at least ten times, the water, when it's gum and gully wash, it's gone over Seventeenth Street, not through the, you understand, flooding. I see their map there, I was going, there's no ditch running through that property. That means, where's the water gonna go? Have you done a wildlife study? There's rabbits, turkeys, road runners, raccoons, opossums, all in that area. Even deer run up and down the railroad track and drink out of that pond. But, uh, of course, they won't be there until it's thawed. But the ma- my main concern is, is uh, you know, just from watching that, I was going, that looks like the water's gonna stay on my property 'cause it won't be running through theirs. Unless, you know, unless, are, are you gonna pay for it? Is the city gonna pay for that ditch? If you approve this?
It would be the, it'd be the responsibility of developers, sir, if we required it.
Okay, I'm just asking. Somebody else said that uh, it would probably be your responsibility for the water drainage through that property. That's somebody else said, I don't know.
Again, i- if it was required by our development staff, then it would be on the developer to fix and take care of the drainage issues.
Okay. Well, the other thing was, I noticed the road coming on to Seventeenth Street, uh, that looks like it's gonna go right where the ditch is. So, that's a, I'll let y'all decide whatever you're gonna do and-
Thank-
If I can, I tried to offer him three-hundred-and-fifty thousand for my property, but he won't, he won't get by doing it.
Thank you, sir, for being here. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll go ahead and include public discussion on this uh, on this particular issue in the chaired entertainment motion.
Mr. Mayor, before you move forward, I think I would be remiss from a legal standpoint not to bring up a couple of issues. Number one, high-density zoning and zoning changes for that. This body just approved a final plat for Glen Haven. I want this body to know that it approved a modification of the comprehensive plan as well as a zoning amendment for high-density living in that area. Same thing for the apartments on Southeast Twenty-Ninth. This body approved a comprehensive plan change and a zoning change uh, to allow high-density apartments in that area. Um, hearing the tenor of what the discussion has been here today and knowing that the, this is what the owner of the property would like to do with his property, I just felt like from a legal standpoint, this body needed to know that it has made decisions in a di- uh, differently on at least two different occasions concerning fairly-high-density residential uh, properties.
Mr. Marsh-
Thank you, Mr. Marsh, and, and every one of them is a, is a, holds its own merit or doesn't hold its own merit, and we understand that.
While true, generally speaking, when um, decisions like that get to be, are made, they're made due to the fact that we have an issue with uh, either ordinance, zoning requirement, something like that. Uh, staff has recommended approval, your planning commission has recommended approval. Neither one of those two groups saw any issues, at least from a city requirement standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh, and, and I am grateful for your input on that because as, as you clearly stated, there's some flexibility with changing the comprehensive uh, plan. And I think the concern of this body is I'm not quite sure that we had as much opposition and resistance from the direct communities impacted by those two other projects. Is that correct? Am I recalling that correctly?
Um, I do know we had some opposition, at least initially, with Glen Haven and what was going on there. I don't know about Southeast Twenty-Ninth. Um, there are other issues that I could talk about concerning the type of opposition we've heard tonight, um, and how that plays politically, especially at Twenty-third and Lincoln, uh, concerning bills that have been uh, proposed. Luckily, they have not passed so far. We have seen bills because of this type of discussion where uh, fairly-powerful groups wanna do away with comprehensive plans and do away with our ability to even have a comprehensive plan.
Gotcha.
Let alone have people um, have to comply with it. So, uh, those all give me real pause for concern, uh, concerning this discussion.
Well, I mean, and, and respectfully though, from my two cents on this, currently, this
is zoned as R six, as bottom line. Whether we accept a change in it or not is a determination that we make. I think that Councilman Byrne has pointed out a couple of issues that I don't know, I wasn't present, as normally we're not requested to be present at the planning commission, that those issues were raised. But there are issues, in my mind, about safety concerns, about what's being proposed with regard to the number of units in this location with the location. And as the lady in the pumpkin t-shirt, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, ma'am, indicated, just like concerns with fire, for example, if a fire would break out, with the degree of high density that is being proposed, and as Matt had indicated, could be even greater than the 198 units that was being discussed with us here tonight on an amendment or on a preliminary plat, I guess would be the best way to phrase it, once we approved a zoning change here. With all of that in mind, I would say that, in my mind, the factors that Mr. Summers outlined from the comprehensive plan gives us some latitude with regard to the use of that track, what's the best use for that track, and also what the input is from the residents there in terms of what the best use is for that. We are elected by our constituents to be their voice, and the constituents are the ones that we speak on behalf of. And it's their input with what is the best use that comes before us as, if you will, the final decision makers on this. So with that, I would...
Also, let me remind you that each and every time one of these plats have come before us, and we've had issues with it, and we've tabled it or taken no action, and we sent it back to the drawing board, the developer has worked with the constituents to try to resolve those issues. And so although each one of these that come before us has its own merits, and also it's on detractors, and so although your advice is well taken, like Ms. Ead says, we represent 60,000 people in the city of Moa City, and our decision is based on their input as well as the input from staff. So go ahead, Ms. Byrne.
I, and I wanted to be clear that I wasn't trying to be critical with staff, but I, what I would hope in the future is that when we have projects like this, where we have so much engagement on behalf of our residents, that we weigh, put a little bit more weight in that, and maybe not even let the developer get this far in planning, raising their awareness about the opposition. And I, for one, appreciate the practice of democracy, and that's what we're having here. But sometimes it may not even be necessary to disappoint a developer, waste their time, given the fact, as Councilwoman Ead said and the mayor also amplified, is that our job is to be representatives of them. And with all due respect to the fine folk off of Lincoln, if they weren't so invested in representing the interest of special interests, we wouldn't be in some of these conditions that we are, especially with the housing crisis that we're facing. But with that, I would like to move to reject the resolution amending the comprehensive plan from low-density residential land use to high-density residential land use, and to also reject the ordinance to redistrict from family, from single-family detached residential district to high-density residential district.
Thank you. I have a properly formed motion, and I have a second. Now, go ahead and conduct your oral call vote, please.
Eads?
Yes, to deny him.
Thank you. Byrne?
Yes, to denial.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes, to deny.
Bana?
Yes.
Favors?
Yes.
Dukes?
Yes. Thank you all for being here and discussing this item with us. We knew it was going to be a long discussion item. We appreciate the company for being here and presenting this. And I'm sure you'll be in contact with, with our staff and try to work some issues out. Thank you guys for being here.
My offer still stands. I'll take $350,000. Have a good day. Sorry about your deal. Football's on the weekend.
Football's on the weekend?
Yeah, I can't be Christmas.
You take care.
Okay, moving on. Item number four, Mr. Lyon.
PC 2184, public hearing. Discussion, consideration, possible action, consider approval of the final plat of Turtlewood Seventh Edition for the property described as attractive land lying in the southeast quarter of Section Seven Township, Eleven North Range, One West, Indian Meridian. Mr. Summers?
Thank you. This is a final plat application before you. This is for the Seventh Edition of the Turtlewood neighborhood, and I believe the final section of that neighborhood. It is for seventy-six single-family residential lots on a total of about sixteen acres. The applicant, I guess the one item that is maybe a little bit different about this than with other final plat applications, is that at the time this neighborhood was started, it received preliminary approval under our older, I guess, our previous zoning regulations and previous subdivision and development regulations. And the previous phases of this neighborhood were approved with five-foot side setbacks instead of what the zoning regulations now would require seven-foot side yard setbacks. Staff did perform their standard review of this prelim, or this final plat application and found that the plat meets our requirements. State and local notification requirements were met. There were two notified property owners who attended the planning commission meeting to address the commission. They had concerns regarding stormwater drainage from this phase to previously approved phases of the neighborhood. Staff does recommend approval of this item, and the planning commission recommended approval unanimously.
I have a question, Matt.
Yes.
You said, under the old rule, it was five foot.
Yes, five feet previously.
Now it's seven. Okay. How long do they have to develop where they can hold on to the new, the older ordinance? Is there the, how long is that before they're required to do it? Because, taking into consideration, there was a moratorium for a while, too, but is the, if the delay is, they just didn't get to it, should they not be held to the new standards versus?
Councilmember, may I respond to that?
Let Matt try. I want Matt to try out with this.
No, that's a great question. I would say, in many cases, we would typically hold the developer to whatever the newly adopted standard is. In this instance, because there are so many previous phases that were approved at a five-foot side setback, it did not seem appropriate. It seemed like it would change some of the character of the neighborhood to approve this one at the larger side setback standard. Typically, that will have impact, an impact on the size of the homes that the developer or the home builder could build in the neighborhood.
But is there, just for, for knowledge, is there a time limit that normally, that we tell them, hey, you waited too long? Like, taking into consideration, there was a moratorium.
I'm not aware of a specific time period that we would.
Okay.
Right here, too.
Just, yeah, Councilman Byrne, just so you're aware, the Oklahoma courts have weighed in on this issue. And I'm reading from the Fitzhugh case that cites the Bankoff case, and they set out the test for when this, when this situation comes up and how it applies. And it says, "While a landowner will not be immune from a zoning change, if he has done nothing more than obtain a permit from the licensing authority, he will be protected, though, if he has made substantial expenditures in reliance thereon or has committed himself to a substantial disadvantage in reliance on the permit or on zoning provisions before the amendment went into effect, even though no construction has begun."
So dumbing that down?
Dumbing it down, it means if they spent, if they spent money or did work to rely on the previous zoning provisions, then they are immune from the new zoning requirements. Now, when this first came up, staff actually brought it to me, and this is what I used when I made a determination. And what I told them was, it is really up to the applicant. And I, and I gave them an either-or proposition. I said, they can go under the old rules, but if they go under the old rules, everything, any positives and any disadvantages from those old rules, come with it. Or they can go under the new requirements and do the seven-foot setback, and any advantages or disadvantages come with it, i.e., you can't pick and choose. I can't say, I want a seven, five-foot setback requirement here, but I want this provision over here. It's one or the other. This applicant, based on this provision and given that option, chose to go with the, the old requirements, which it at least appeared to me when this was presented to me, under the law, was something contemplated by these decisions.
Okay, but let me weigh in on this one really quickly, Don. So I'm confused because when you're saying if they have expended substantial money, basically, they've got detrimental reliance on moving forward under the old rules. So what had they expended for this section that we're looking at prior to when the new ordinances took effect?
It is my understanding, and once again, it is my understanding, that they had, when this first came through, it came through while it was going to be a multi-phase project. The entire project came through initially, and we knew that they were going to develop this entire area at some given point in time. It was just going to be phased through. So they made, so they were relying, when they made that initial application, on the ordinances that were in place at the time, i.e., you know, they, they committed himself to a substantial disadvantage in reliance on a permit or on a zoning provision before the amendment went into effect.
Okay, but in that regard, weren't they notified, and I mean, surely any person is aware, that zoning regulations can change, ordinance regulations can change? So I mean, how much detrimental reliance can you go on with the full project when they chose not to go ahead and develop this last leg, if you will, of the project?
I am not familiar enough to say when Turtlewood One, Two, which is now Aspen Ridge, I believe, and Three, Four, Five, and Six were done, to say how much of a delay that there was between doing all of those. With that said, I still believe, at least in my humble opinion, that this provision applies to this situation, and that, like I said, they, in my opinion, they had a choice. They could either go one way or the other.
But they're not...
And I can, and I can tell you, when doing...
But they're not doing that, in fairness. When I look at the staff report at page four, the fire marshal's comments, for example, say that though painted turtleway exceeds 150 feet, fire marshal has approved there not being dead-end turnaround. That tells me that we have a requirement for a dead-end turnaround if the size exceeds 150 feet.
Well, I don't know when that dead-end turnaround went into effect.
Okay. So should we table this and figure out the answers to the questions before we bring it back again, then?
Ms. Summers, I got a question. I asked the city engineer this. I'm going to ask you this. What advantage does the developer have between a five-foot setback and a seven-foot setback?
I mean, basically, it increases the size of the building envelope on the lot. They can build a house that is four feet wider and, I guess, however many square feet based on the property depth. I mean, that's, that's the main...
So a bigger house?
Yes. They can build larger houses on the lots, which...
With a, with a five-foot mud hole between each house?
Yeah, I mean, that sometimes...
I'm talking from experience.
Gotcha.
So basically, the issue that we run into whenever you do the five-foot setback is because you have less drainage, not as good of drainage as you would with a seven-foot setback, possibly?
That's, that's possible. I don't review the stormwater drainage.
Yeah. And then also, I think one of the things that it would do is it gives them the ability to put more houses in the smaller area.
That's, that's, they might be able to. I mean, it didn't, the, the size of the lots that are allowed is not impacted by the setback. So they would still roughly follow the same density level of the development, the same number of units per acre.
So in the initial plat, did they have seventy-six homes in addition to seven? Do we know that?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And have we checked to make sure that these homes, these seventy-six homes, are not going to add too much drainage to the retention pond down there where we're going to have a failure?
That would be a question for either our engineers or the applicant's engineer.
I think, again, we have too many questions because I hadn't even got to my drainage questions, which is to dovetail on what Councilman Favors is saying. So respectfully, I'm going ahead and move that we take no action on this one and allow responses to these questions that we've just discussed to be ferreted out before it comes back to us again, because I think that's something that we need to know.
I second that. And kind of to Don's point, I noticed that the two residents that actually proposed this, what their concerns were drainage, so we really have to figure that part out.
Right.
What does this do to the notice requirements, timing?
I mean, I think if we, if we were to table this, Don, to the next meeting, we would not be, we would not need to re-notify. Is that correct?
That if you table, then you're making a determination now that it'll be put on the agenda for next month, and no additional notice requirement is necessary. If you take no action, which means no further action is being taken, which means that this body is not making a determination that it will be on the agenda next month, we would then need to re-notice for a public meeting this action.
Okay. I would, I would give you a heads up on this. We have been dealing with this for nine years, and we had substantial flooding issues with the first couple of plats. It was like pulling teeth to get the detention pond built on the north side of this to handle the runoff that was being caused by this, by this development. So I personally would like to ask, we have assurances that that detention pond is going to handle the additional seventy-six homes, and if not, what is the plan to take care of it? So I'm, we've been there, done that, and, and we really don't want to go there again unless we've got assurances that it's going to be taken care of.
But if we table this, that it comes back to us exactly as it is, as opposed to...
That is correct.
Us being able to get the additional information and get the additional staff comments that were received.
And you are correct on that. It is required to come back exactly as it is because of the notice provisions.
So respectfully, I'm going to stand on my motion, and if that costs us having to reissue notice, so be it. Because, again, the, the risk to us with yet another leg of this development where we've historically had significant drainage problems is worth all the money we could spend with regard to having to reissue notices to make sure we get the information we need to our satisfaction.
I agree.
And I second that motion that you made, but I don't know, Mayor, if there was anyone that signed up that may be here, that may not be able to make it to next month's meeting, if they, if there's anyone that wanted to address this item before.
Well, I think, once we move to take no action, are we allowed to take public comment at that point?
We haven't voted.
But before, you can take, you can still take comment on it before you vote. Once you vote, it's over. You have a motion and a second pending. If you want to still take, you're still in the middle of a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Do I need to go with a public hearing?
You do need to follow the public. Well, if you're going to take no action, you can skip over those, but understand that if you may have people here who want to speak, and then they won't have the ability to voice... and then they won't have the ability to voice their opinion.
Make sure our constituencies are well served.
So, I'm going to withdraw my motion temporarily, and I'm going to reurge it after public comment is allowed.
So, this is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring forth counsel on this particular item?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and counsel, Chris Anderson, SMC Consulting Engineers, I'm the engineer on this development, representing the developers. The one thing I'd want to point out, and I actually was talking with one of the other engineers about this, and this is no slight at anybody, but this process is almost a little, seems a little backwards to me. In the other communities we work in, you go and you take your final plat to the planning commission and the city council before you go and construct the project. This project's already been constructed. The construction plans were approved with the lot sizes and the setbacks that were shown. Utilities were put in, services connected to those lots were put in, based on certain lot sizes to fit a certain type of house. So, to come back after it's already been constructed with millions of dollars of infrastructure put in the ground and to say, hey, no, you can't do this, something's wrong with that. So, I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Some striking information. So-
What will be the, oh, go ahead.
I'm asking him a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
What will be, what will the developer do if this is, if no action is taken or this is turned down? What impact will it have on the actual community being built?
They're not here, so I can't really answer that for them, but, no, I'm not going to answer that for them. I don't think would be good. I'll just put it that way.
But you're the engineer. You could redesign it to make it work?
Sure, but they've already put capital into the ground. They've already put money into the ground. It's built based upon a set of approved plans by your city. And so, now you go through this as a final plat- And say, no, you can't do that. That's, again, the process seems a little backwards to me, that's all.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, so typically, they'll go through a preliminary plat, which comes before the planning commission and this body. They will get preliminary approval for the layout of, of the neighborhood, and based on, on that approval, they will go and develop construction plans for the neighborhood. They will, you know, construct the roads according to city requirements, the utilities, grade the lots, and, and put in other infrastructure. And then, once all that is, is approved and finalized, that's when they come before you all with the final plat application.
He said there are houses built up there, if I didn't misunderstand.
No, not houses. I think, I think he was referring to the infrastructure.
Infrastructure and the services.
Everything's in up there. I drove the other day.
And I agree. I agree with what the gentleman said. To me, if they're doing all that work before we even give them a final plat, it seems backwards.
Obviously, we need to heed to that as we consider this in the future, but, I mean, I don't know. Is there a way to reconsider the process we have to make it, I mean, I don't know. At long term, Mayor, not, not on this particular item, but long term.
I'll, I'll enter this discussion. I, I want to address the drainage. The two citizens did have drainage problems during construction, but the developer went out there and extended some retaining walls, and to our knowledge, they don't have the drainage issues anymore. As far as the pond, that original pond was built with this development in mind, so it can handle this development.
So, let me just make sure I'm clear.
It can.
It can.
Let me make sure that I'm clear. Okay. Two things. One, you just answered the first one, which I wanted to clarify. So, you're telling me, and this council, 100% confident that the current detention pond can handle any storm runoff from this final plat area, seventh addition?
Yes.
Hundred percent?
It was built to that capacity.
Okay. And secondly, with regard to the two residents who had complaints about drainage that you're saying you think their problems were remedied by the developer going out and building extensions of retaining walls, have we had further communication, has staff had further communication with those residents to verify that solved their problems, or are you saying just the residents didn't call again to complain further, so it's an assumption it solved their problems?
We, we talked with Patrick today, who was heading up that issue, and the retaining wall extension was supervised by him and done to his satisfaction to remedy it. There is, it's Shell Drive, are the two, Shell Drive are the two houses that are, there you go. She can speak to that.
Okay.
Are you on the floor? Yes, yes.
She's-
I'm on, sign up. Nicole Randall.
Yes, ma'am.
2404 Shell Drive.
And your name?
Nicole Randall.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I was at the planning meeting. I voiced my concerns there. I understand, and I, I believe the developer has done what they're supposed to do based on the requirements. My concern is, when were those requirements reevaluated? That pond was built in 2010. Our environment, our, our infrastructure, everything has changed since then, so I don't know how often those requirements are looked at and reevaluated. So, you say that it's, it should, it's supposed to, but we all know that sometimes things don't work out that way. So, as a resident and part of the HOA, I'm concerned that, once this starts, if there's an issue, then it's on us to fix, because the developer's done the minimum requirements to fulfill the needs that are set forth by the city.
Yeah, let me ask you a question. And we've dealt with this for a long time.
Yes, sir.
And, so, has the developer followed through with the retaining walls and all the, all the issues that came before us eight years ago?
I would, I can't speak on behalf of everybody. I can speak on behalf of what I see in front of my house, and we walked it yesterday, and you could see that there's erosion that's right in front of my house from Marsh Drive, or Marsh, I don't know what lane, that it's the washout, and some of it could be because it's just dirt. They've taken all the, you know, the trees and the grass and all of that stuff out, but I have an issue every time it rains that my intersection, it's covered in mud.
Now, where are you located as to, in relationship to this development? Are you downstream from it?
So, I am on the square, the, the upper part of the square. I'm on the right side, right where that line is.
Okay.
Ish.
Closer to me.
Closer, um, my, my house back to, to the pond.
Okay.
So, I guess it's actually one street over.
You're on Shell Drive.
I'm on Shell Drive, yes, sir.
Shell Drive is right here.
Yes, sir, and I'm on the east side.
So, you're getting dirt, and you're getting dirt from-
I'm seeing it in the street on Shell Drive.
Okay.
But again, my house is the one that sits on the, the detention pond, and so, all water's flowing that direction. I'm just concerned that, again, that I need assurances from the developer that they have done everything they're supposed to. They've put all the drainages like they're supposed to, and if there is any concern that they're helping us fix that pond, because the sediment basin that, that flows into needs some work as well. That is on the residents for us to fix.
So, would it be-
I would like to see that be a term of what we're approving on the final plat.
And, and that's-
The detention pond.
I like her suggestion, but I also wanted to say, would it be your recommendation at this body to take no action on this until we have something in writing, as Councilwoman Eads proposed?
Mr. Misch.
I mean, that would be my recommendation. I do have another concern. So, like the gentleman had stated, I was not notified whenever they started construction on this area. This is the first notification I had was for the planning meeting. So, I, I agree that it is a little backwards, but a, as a resident, I come to every one of these. I've seen you numerous times when it comes to the things that are happening in our neighborhood, and so I, I wasn't alerted. So, I don't, I don't know what that process is supposed to look like. I don't know if they jumped the gun. I don't know. But, as a resident, I'm just concerned that I'm going to be fixing somebody else's problem.
So, you're saying you never received a letter?
Nope, not when they started this new addition 7. The only reason I even knew about it is because I went through the city council meeting minutes.
Mr. City Attorney.
I was just, to answer one of your questions concerning finances, I was just been informed by our Director of Engineering that this entire area, including this, this section was designed and platted all the way back in 2010. So, they did make, they did make substantial, provide, they did spend substantial amounts of money to have that done.
Which is exactly what this resident is telling us, and that is the concern with the retention pond, detention, retention, pond, detention, Mr. Bundy?
Retention.
Retention, thank you. Okay, so, my issue is this. I'm going to reurge my motion again, and just as it was stated previously, with an addition, though, that I think that this final plat needs to come with a condition that that retention pond, it's the developer's guarantee, that retention pond will adequately handle the drainage from this additional leg, or they're going to add another retention pond, whatever other solution the engineers collectively can come up with. I do not speak engineer, so I'm not even going to try.
Looks like Mr. Misch has something to say, but I will second that motion.
The mayor had a question for me, so I'm going to, I'm putting a pin in your spot, because I do have one thing to say about that.
Okay. Can we make recommendations to the plat as a condition of approving it? Can we, can we address all these issues by way of a motion to ensure that her issues are taken care of, and the issues that we've seen are taken care of?
I guess my concern, and I'm putting it, I'm answering yours, and I'm going to answer your question at the same time concerning your motion, Ms. Eads, is that what do you want to see in the way of certification? I mean, we've already got it, we've already received an engineering report, sealed, signed by a registered professional engineer that says the stormwater detention pond and the stormwater collection system is adequate. From where I come from, which is the Oklahoma State Department of Health, that is, that is what we use as our main position, main crux, to say, okay, we've got a registered professional engineer who has sealed it, who is licensed by the state of Oklahoma, who has sealed this, to say it is, it is adequate. So, when you ask, can we put these provisions on here, do we have anything? The answer is yes. We have a registered professional engineer who's put their license now on the line, and their certification on the line.
But as of what day?
Hmm?
As of what day?
As of whenever-
I mean, it would be, I guess, whenever he stamped the construction plans, which I don't know.
Which is 2010, before that, like ever 2010. Because, again, I, I respect what you're saying, nothing. We both have expert witnesses of plenty, type of thing, even of the engineering variety, which are often difficult to understand. No disrespect intended, guys, but, again, there is a reason why the engineering school and the law school used to war at OU. Here's, what the lady is saying is just straight logical sense to me. Like, things have changed since 2010, okay? So, if it was certified as of 2010, I, I get it, but, again, we're talking about now changes that have been made since 2010, as well as this additional leg. So, when they stated this certification and the plan was, I mean, did that include the anticipated runoff from this additional leg that we're now dealing with the final plat of, or did it not? That's kind of where I'm driving to.
They, they give us the drainage report when they start the construction plans. So, that was two years ago, maybe, two or three years ago.
And was that for this additional leg or not for the-
Just for this leg here that you're seeing in red.
Okay, so, we have to clarify. We have a certified report from an engineer that says for this additional leg, the retention pond is sufficient to cover the drainage from this leg.
Yes.
In addition to what it's already handling from the neighborhood.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if anybody else feels better, but at least I understand who I think.
I feel a little bit better.
And Matt, the preliminary plat included a five-foot setback?
I, yes, yes.
So, what I don't understand, though, is, if that was done two years ago, why this resident believes that there is ongoing problems with her property and potentially her neighbors, and what can we do at this point to make sure that as the addition moves forward? Because no one's opposed to the concept of building new homes and bringing new neighbors to you, but we don't, we also want to make sure we don't leave existing residents with issues that we, as the city, and I know, Mr. Bundy, you get these calls, right, whether it's overlay or development, something that people are frustrated about. So, what needs to be done? Would it be something the city needs to do, or is it something the property owner needs to do, and can we, as Councilwoman Eads suggested, put that into terms and negotiate those to make everybody happy?
Yes.
All right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Does that, that's a question, I, the, in respect to the dirt that's in the road, that is really a stormwater constructability thing that, that is ongoing until that area is revegetated. So, every site, construction site that we have runs into that issue where there is sand and dirt that gets off the site. Now, we try to do the best we can, and we do a pretty good job with it at the city, but that does happen. So, as far as the concern with the rain and seeing dirt in the road, that has happened on this site.
Now, I will say one thing about that. That is, though, a, they have to have a permit for stormwater construction when they do more than one acre. They have to put in stormwater pollution control devices to keep sediment from doing exactly that. If those are failing or they're inadequate, we do have the ability to take action there to require additional or more sophisticated stormwater pollution control devices to ensure that that does not happen in the future.
And we have done that. There, there was a event earlier this spring, they had already paved the new roads, and a lot of sediment got on the road, and we made them clean it all up and put it back, or attempt to put it back into the, the lots. As far as her drainage concern was, when we were notified of it, we had the developer extend a retaining wall to help rebalance the lot, so it wasn't dumping water directly into somebody's backyard. There is always going to be some water that leaves the site, but our ordinance is, you can drain one lot across one lot to the public infrastructure, and we have abided by that.
So, Mr. Misch, if I'm reading the tea leaves here, it's my understanding that you are suggesting that we should go ahead and approve this final plat, considering they have made their investment in proceeding to put the roads in and make their investment, and so that we stand no leg to enforce seven-foot setback versus five-foot setback, even though that's what our current ordinance requires. And, Mr. Bundy, you've indicated that we've got a certified statement from an engineer indicating the current retention pond will hold any stormwater runoff from this additional leg. So, in all total, is that your recommendation that we proceed to just approve this final plat, then?
From a legal standpoint, I don't make, I make recommendations. Obviously, what I would say is, I believe that they're in compliance with city ordinance as it pertains to zoning issues, as explained and discussed by the appellate courts in the, for the state of Oklahoma. As for recommendations, that's engineering and zoning and planning's purview.
Question?
Question. In the event that the sealed certificate that you have doesn't, doesn't really work, what is our recourse? And I think that's what the citizens in that area want to know. If all of our great planning doesn't work, what is the city prepared to do to make it right with the citizens? Is it going to court and suing them and make them do it? What is the, what is the recourse?
Well, I, I want to address the seal issue, but as far as this development, after the development is final platted, they start with the home building, and we continuously monitor these neighborhoods as they build out homes. If there are issues, especially with a developer like this that is building the homes on the site, they're in it until the last home is built. And so, this is a continuous process. We are not, even though it's called final plat, we are not at the end of this process. And so, we do keep, we keep monitoring the drainage, and we can address it site by site, individual by individual. And then, I, I want to point out, it's not something we, we used to do very much, but we're going to start doing more of. City engineer, Patrick Menifee, will issue a notice of acceptance for all the final plats, and it's in our packet here. And basically, he, he informs us as a council and, and staff that it was done under supervision and approved by him, by, by city standard. So, there's a, the- by, by city standard. So, there's a, the developers, engineer, and then Patrick's an engineer, and so they both reviewed it. Now, is it perfect? No, not everything's ever perfect, and there are always something that, that will be an issue. But as far as major issues, we, that's the process that we go through.
Okay.
I think some of the angst on this particular deal is, what the mayor's made reference to it, is that we, eight years ago, when we got on the council, that detention pond out there was a, was a complete failure. I mean, it was, we were kind of betting and waiting for houses to go in it. And you're telling us that they've improved that and fixed it, which if, if they have, that's a big deal, because it could, it couldn't take the water that was there eight years ago, let alone what we're gonna add to it now. So, if you guys, I feel more comfortable if you guys have actually looked at it, or somebody from the staff has looked at it, because like I said, eight years ago, it was, I know the mayor and I spent several days out there, because I was really anticipating us getting a call one day that one of those houses had gone into the pond.
That, that, that was referring to the retaining walls that were failing and they, yeah, they went in and fixed them?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna withdraw.
I would like to clarify that. They did not go in and fix that. They gave us, they turned over the HOA at that point, and the residents were responsible for hiring a company to, to go in and replace those retaining walls. Now, granted, they, they gave us the money as part of the HOA. That bid was not sufficient to what it is today. So, and I, I'd like to clarify, so, we have an HOA as turtle wood already. It's been turned over to us. And so, you're telling me, again, for clarification, these 70-plus homes, if anything happens that starts impacting the residents that currently has an HOA, the developer's responsible for fixing all of that? Because again, this is turtle wood. There's a turtle wood HOA already, and so I don't know where those lines break, if you could answer that.
That'd be a dumb question.
Yes.
I wanna, I wanna make it, I, I, because I wanted to make it a brand, branding question.
Is this area of turtle wood, officially referred to as the Turtlewood Seventh Edition, considered to be part of your HOA area?
My HOA is turtle wood.
I don't know.
Addition. So, that's what, I'm not, I'm, I need clarification.
It has to be more clear than that, though, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't think they've been told yet.
Correct.
Correct.
We don't know that. And I'm sorry, I haven't, I haven't signed up to speak, because I didn't think I was gonna need to, but if I need to, I can.
Well, if you're gonna address the council, okay, I think we've heard enough, and I'm gonna close the public hearing on this. And the chair would entertain a motion that's at the discretion of the council.
Well, I think actually you have a motion pending from me, because I re-urged my original motion to take no action on this. So, I'm going to, once again, sorry, Madam Clerk, withdraw that motion.
So, you are withdrawing your, your motion?
Yes.
Chair, entertain a new motion.
I make a motion to approve the final plat.
Second. I have a properly formed motion and a second. Go ahead and conduct a roll-call vote, please.
Eads?
Based upon the advice of staff, I must say yes.
Burn?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Bana?
Yes.
Favors?
No.
Dukes?
No. To the engineer that addressed us, with all due respect, I don't know what other towns that you've worked in, don't really care. This is Midwest City. These are all intelligent people here. We read our packets. We have concerns. We represent 60,000 people, and, and, and we take that charge very seriously. So, I appreciate your input, but this is Midwest City, and welcome to it. All right. Motion passes, and we'll move on to item number five.
PC 2185, public hearing discussion consideration, possible action to consider approval of a special use permit to allow food and beverage retail sales for the property described as a part or located at 1740 South Sooner Road Suite A and E. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. This application is for a special use permit for the use described under Section 4.4.29 of Appendix A of the municipal code. The hospitality district, which is the zoning district the property is in, does not allow for food and beverage retail sales by right. It is a, a special use permit. The applicant has requested this special use permit, and I guess to keep it brief, we find that it is in compliance and would be a great benefit to the zoning district and the surrounding area. We do recommend that a condition be applied to the special use permit, like we do with many others, that upon the sale or transfer of ownership of the site, that the special use permit would then expire, and any new use of a similar type would need to apply for their own permit. We recommend approval of this item, as did the planning commission, and we did comply with all local and state notification requirements.
So, this is in my ward, so I'm going to speak to this just really quickly, if I might. First off, this is for Crumble Cookie. And secondly, it's for two suites that are not otherwise occupied, so it's filling space in an area that we would appreciate space being filled. And I'm not sure if anybody has signed up for public hearing discussion on this one.
No, ma'am.
Or not. But seeing none, I'd like to go ahead and move to approve this item.
I do have to open up the public hearing, then.
Never mind.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring forth, counsel, concerning this particular item? Hearing or seeing none, Ms. Eads, please proceed.
I'd like to submit a motion to approve this item with the contingency of the expiration of the special use permit, as Mr. Summers discussed, once Crumble Cookie no longer exists in business at this location.
Which we hope never happens.
Absolutely. We hope it never happens.
Second. I do have a motion and a second and further discussion. All in favor, indicate as seeing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Item number six, Mr. Lyon.
PC 2186, public hearing discussion consideration, possible action to consider approval of the preliminary plat of Carter's Code for the property described as a tract, a land lying in the northeast quarter of Section 6, Township 11 North, Range 1 West, Indian Ridge. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. This is a preliminary plat application. The applicant is looking to potentially develop an 18-lot, single-family development. There would be one separate lot that would be a common area lot that would handle some of the stormwater detention.
Can you advance the slide, please? Thank you.
The, we found that, in our review, that the preliminary plat did comply with our regulations for the R6 zoning district and the subdivision development regulations. The plat will need to comply with our thoroughfare screening requirements due to its location on Westminster Road, and it will need to also observe the requirements regarding driveways and some of our anti-monotony standards. We did follow local and state notice requirements, and we did receive some calls from owners in opposition. One in particular had concerns about drainage and privacy. One was not opposed to the proposal, but did request that there be screening between this site and the property to the south. At the planning commission hearing, there was a representative from the adjoining church that addressed the planning commission regarding drainage and detention requirements, as well as some questions about fencing. We found that the plat, the preliminary plat does satisfy our requirements. Staff recommends approval, and the planning commission also recommended approval.
Mr. Mayor, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that this is our first requested preliminary plat in our former area where we did not allow any development for about 12 to 15 months.
Duly noted. This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring forth, counsel, concerning this item? Hearing or seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I think Ms. Shored sat her hand raised.
I, I didn't sign up, but I represent the church, and we're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Several months out of the city.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think, I, I drove by there too, several times, and it's, we appreciate you waiting. We know it's been difficult. We're, we, but it was just a process. And I think it'll be a good addition out there.
Absolutely.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor, indicate as seeing aye. Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration, possible action entering to an agreement for professional services with Johnson &amp; Associates, LMRK, MeShack, Plumber, SRB, and TAP Architecture, provide professional services as an on-call basis for the budget year 24, '25, delegating city manager pre-beach task order up to the amount of $100,000.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. In August of this year, we, we set out an RFQ to all architects and engineers, surveyors, that wanted to apply or send us a qualification statement. And what we're trying to accomplish is, sometimes when we have projects that are somewhat minor or time-intensive, it's nice to have an engineer on call that's ready to go, already contracted with the city. And so, we looked at the city of Norman, what City of Oklahoma City do. I'm sure there's other cities that do it as well, and we kind of mirrored what they did. We, as staff, that include public works, economic development, and planning, sat down and looked over those qualification statements. We received quite a few, a lot more than I thought and anticipated. Not doing this before, we did not know how we were going to award, or how many we were gonna award, but we settled on an engineer for roadway and drainage, two engineers for utilities, one engineer for surveyor, or a surveyor for surveying, and an architect. And the reason we did two for utilities is because we have quite a few utility projects this year that are minor in nature that can, are ready to go out the door. I'll, I provided a few examples of some of the projects that are already budgeted that we intend to use this contract for. You're also gonna see these contracts on each of the authorities, and the reason being is, in the budget, sometimes the project is through the municipal authority or the hospital authority. So, it really gives us a lot of flexibility.
Some of you have any questions, Mr. Bundy?
Well, I have a statement. I, I do appreciate you telling us the process, because that was one of the questions. How do we come up with these people that we use? And secondly, have we used any of these people for any contract work before?
Yes, every single one of them. And that is one of the reasons we recommended approval. We feel comfortable with each and one, each one of them. We've done projects either ongoing or in the past with each of them.
But that, would that mean, would, would respect to that, right, that gives you some credibility if you've worked with them before, but we are complying with equal bidding and an equal solicitation process, right, that we're not just giving contracts based on working relationships, right? Okay. So, again, can you really, because I, this is all over my head, because I'm not at City Hall every day, and so I don't know how the operations currently work. So, tip, right now, if you have a small project that we don't have staff for, that is capable of performing, you guys bid that, put one specific project out, and would it be correct that now you want to hire a third party to do that for you?
Well, we actually are fortunate, because of all the projects that we have, we do not do a lot of design in-house. We rarely do. We don't have a surveyor. We don't have an architect. But amongst myself and Patrick, and I'll speak for Kerry as well, that are engineers, we don't do a lot of in-house. We just don't have the time for it. So, we administer those through contracts. In the past, when we'd have a small project, we would either get together as staff and we would select a contractor to, or a consultant to go under contract with. This is actually a more transparent method, because we use the RFQ method. It was all out in the open. We said, everybody that's interested in doing work with Midwest City, send us your, your information.
What role do they play, though, in hiring future contractors? I guess, am I misunderstanding what the memo said, that they didn't identify people to come do certain projects?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. It's, the consultants are just doing the design. We then bid it out, ourself as city or the authority.
So, it doesn't basically hand it over to a third party where there is no longer a necessity to do a bidding process?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
For, for example, there's a, a project to improve the shared centerline miles with the city of Choctaw, but we have to investigate it right now. And so, we will engage the consultant to do a geotechnical, make recommendations, and develop an estimate. We'll then use that estimate to apply for fines. So, that's what they're going to do. That's their scope.
What's the maximum cap on this?
$100,000.
Yeah, that's per project, then?
Per project.
So, what's the maximum cap?
Whatever's budgeted. All these projects are gonna be budgeted.
So, there's different, different amounts per each project?
Yeah, they're gonna be very different. Each project will be different.
Could you have a situation where it was an emergency and you had to have them do something immediately, or is this more planned?
Well, we like to be proactive. But if there was an emergency, for example, there was recently a sewer crossing over a creek that demanded attention, and in that case, we could call up one of the utility contract, or consultants, I should say, and say, we need somebody 24 hours. In fact, we request that it is 24-hour response.
Yeah. This'll help us be much more efficient.
And if it...
And it's more fair than just picking somebody, even though it's a professional service.
Now, if it's, if, let's say there is a job and they literally cannot perform the task in 24 hours, maybe because they've got some other commitments, would you still, would you be prohibited from looking outside yourself to perform? Okay, that doesn't prohibit you?
We wouldn't be prohibited.
This is our preference. So, if we, and again, we have really good feedback with all of these consultants, but if we find that there's an issue with the contract, you know, we can, we can move on from that.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I'm back. Go ahead.
There's a public discussion.
There's no other questions?
That was not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
Motion to approve?
Yeah. I got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate as seeing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Next item, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration, possible action on a resolution relating to the incurring of indebtedness by the trustees of the Midwest City Municipal Authority in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2,252,000. Approving, approving documents as net, as may be necessary or required in declaring an emergency, which will be a separate vote.
No bowtie?
No. Good evening.
Oh, you wanna, go ahead.
Would you, good evening, mayor and council, city manager. I know that I'm not wearing a bowtie tonight, but I wanna point out that this is 100% loan forgiveness. So, technically, I'm not asking for money necessarily. We just need the resolution so that we can get the free money from OWRB.
Move to approve.
I've got a motion and a second.
That's cool.
There's no bowtie. All in favor, indicate as seeing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Streets. Next item.
Move to approve. Second, sorry. Was that out of order?
Which one are we on? Number nine?
Number nine.
Okay.
Just drove me under the bus already.
Brutal.
Go ahead.
Discussion consideration, possible action regarding a 3.8% increase across the board to the base salary of city employees covered by the International Association of Firefighters' Local 2066 Collecting Bargain Agreement to be effective July 1, 2024.
Now, move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. No discussion for the firemen, huh? All in favor, indicate as seeing aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, we forgot an emergency on number eight, so I need you to go back to number eight and make a motion that it passes via emergency.
We did do that. I'm glad you caught that.
No, Mr. Street, I want you to know, Mr. Streets caught that and tapped me on the shoulder.
Okay.
Move to approve number eight, also under an emergency adoption measure.
Well, I need a motion declaring an emergency.
Motion to declare an emergency.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, end cap sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Opposed? Motion carries. The emergency is declared. And we passed number nine. Let's go to number 10.
Discussion consideration for adoption, including any possible amendment to approve the annual water meter schedule. Fees review is allowed per Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 43, Water Sewer sewage disposal, stormwater, Article 2, Water, Section 18, installation fees, meter installation. Mr. Streets, these, these are, these are just pass-through dollars. This is what it costs us for a water meter through the contractors, and we are passing just that cost to, go ahead, Paul, to the-
Correct. That's actually, you're right on point. I want to point out that we have an AMI, or Automated Meter System, infrastructure, and those require very special meters that we have to provide to the folks that actually build the Midwest City. And in order to facilitate that process, we purchase the meter, and then they buy it from us to install it. All we're doing is recovering the exact same cost that we purchased the meter for that is then paid back to the city. So, no revenue or anything else. This is just for us to maintain our automated meter system.
And then, obviously, sorry, whenever they, the builder has that hooked up, there's obviously a charge for the plumber to come out.
Correct.
And they have to use somebody that we approve, or-
Correct. There's an approved list. They have to be able to do the work.
Any further questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion and a second. All in favor, end cap sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Item number 11.
Discussion consideration possible action approving a new lease agreement with New Cellular Wireless or AT&amp;T and the Municipal Authority for the lease space for the installation of cellular antennas on the clock tower at WP Bill Atkinson Park, 301 East Midwest Boulevard, at an annual payment of $35,000.
I want to point out that this also has that annual increase of, from memory, 2.5%.
2.5%, yes.
It's an escalator.
Thank you. That's the word I was looking for. I'm hangry. I'm sorry. But I didn't get to eat before I came, and now I'm like, hangry, so. I want to compliment the fact that our former contract was like at $21,000 on this. So, now we're bumping this up to $35,000 with that, the addition of that annual escalator, so, good job.
And we also, it was formerly a 30-year agreement. This is only a 25-year agreement.
So, um-
It's four, it's four or five, it's one five-year plus four or five-year renewal.
So, and I just want to move to approve it.
Well, can I ask you a question before you do? I, please, I noticed that as well. But my question is, again, I'm constantly being told all over the paper and the news that, you know, inflation is out the roof and cost of everything is up. So, that additional money that we're going to be bringing in, in the form of, I think, $35,000, does, does that just cover the maintenance part? Because we are obviously responsible for maintenance, or is the city going to make some form of a revenue?
Yeah, let me, let me answer that. So, so, this money goes into an account that maintains the clock tower, and I think we are trying to build up enough money to paint the clock tower, because it was, what was the last bid on painting the clock tower? Somebody tell me, where's IT when you need them?
A lot of money.
Hundreds of thousands. Yeah, hundreds of thousands. So, it's, it goes into a maintenance account.
But, but that's just for maintenance. I mean, why are we not making revenue, given the fact, right? They want to use the tower, right, and so we have to maintain it? And so, why are we not getting something in return for allowing them to-
Well, we're getting $35,000 a year, and two and a half percent each. And just, I'll just, I'll be very, very brief. Back in my days with the city of Oklahoma City, I did a review. And if you want to see the memo I wrote on that, that I brought over from Oklahoma City, where I interviewed people in the industry and how you go about deciding what that rent should be, what the amount should be, went through that process, where we looked at the number of cars that drive by that could ping that, the number of houses that can ping that, the number of businesses that can ping that. And the highest amount that we have in Oklahoma that I've been able to find is on top of a water tower in Nichols Hills, and they're probably at about $42,000, $43,000. More densely populated, more densely business-wise. So, from that, I, we started negotiations with AT&amp;T. I will tell you, I think our first number was at 38. I was given one caveat by the city manager, which was, "Get as much as you can without scaring them off." And so, we, we negotiated at 35. The city manager agreed with that. Now, I will also tell you, we have a second antenna that, on there, that will, that agreement will be coming up in a couple of years, which is with T-Mobile. I've already started and basically told them, "This is your agreement. Take it or leave it, because we're not going to treat T-Mobile differently than AT&amp;T."
Which, wait, you also have to understand the extrinsic value of this arrangement, okay? In the original mile, we have significant problems with tree growth in power lines, okay? It takes out our power regularly, all right? I got calls from constituents in yesterday's rainstorm about multiple power losses, okay? Guess what we don't have a problem with? Cell service. All the bars are lit up on our phones all the time. So, as someone who has lived 10 years in the original mile, I just want to say, I also appreciate, not only are we making money on having that cellular antenna put on the clock tower, but the cell service works really good in the neighborhood. And when we're already dealing with a loss of electrical on the regular and longstanding losses of electrical, it's nice to have something that we can brag on that goes right.
Yeah.
So.
I will second your motion, but I guess what I just want to make sure is that we are making above what it costs to maintain the tower.
I will tell you, in my opinion, over the lifetime of this contract, and given the escalators, yes, we will, but it will take some time to build that money, because when the first con, we are working at a little bit of a deficit from the first contract. We weren't getting enough from the first contract. And so, we've got to rebuild that up with this contract and moving forward.
I still second that. Thank you.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, end cap sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Next item, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration possible action approving an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, City Council, Section 2-12, Place of City Council Meetings Invitation, Providing for Repealer and Severability. Mr. Marsh.
This change to the city ordinance, which I want to make sure everyone's aware did not go through the ordinance review committee, does give the city a bit more flexibility in calling a special meeting that may not be held here at the City Hall and in these chambers. To give you, and this has come up a couple of times, at least since I've been here. We had to do quasi-legal fiction when we were remodeling this place, and we had to declare that the courtroom was the council chambers. And if you, many of you may recall, when we did the work on, when we did the grand opening for the, for American Glass, four of you showed up, and I had to sneak around to each one of you and say, "Hey, three of you, four, all four of you can't be together in one place at one time," because we didn't have the ability to call any type of meeting away from here. What this does is, only for special meetings and only for emergency meetings, we already kind of had it for emergency meetings, but only for those two type of meetings, could something be called, a meeting be called that's not on-site here. All regularly scheduled meetings like this one here tonight still must be held here at City Hall, within the city council chambers, under the ordinance. All this does is give a little bit more flexibility to allow special meetings and emergency meetings to be done away from the-
Is it not, am I not clear? I mean, I remember getting big packets when I was first elected that actually articulated in it very clearly that in case of an actual emergency, whether it be weather-related or otherwise, that we actually can convene meetings.
We, we could in the case, if an emergency was called, then that, we've tweaked that a little bit to say that it's just an emergency meeting, so you don't have to have the emergency call, so we gave a little more flexibility there, and then we've extended that also to special meetings.
Okay.
Because the ordinance was a little bit clear, because it said, "In the case of an emergency, we can do a special meeting." And it's like, well, no, that's really an emergency meeting, so we made it much more, what was done is, we made it much more clear to say it applies to both emergency meetings and special meetings, which seemed to be the intent of the original ordinance.
So, we, if I'm clear, if there is a legitimate emergency, an emergency is declared, then this council can meet at alternative locations to have a meeting.
With notice requirements.
Well, yes. We still have to meet all the notice requirements under the open meeting.
Uh, that's required by statute. So, we have this beautiful space that we used ARPA funds, make it more accessible. This room is the only room that I recognize that has live feed accessible, where we are documenting public meetings, that is therefore more accessible to the taxpayers who pay the overhead over here, right? And so, my concern is, there should be no reason unless this room is inaccessible, and therefore, we should have plenty of time to bring it before the council, to vote it through that way. I've had these discussions with Tim, particularly twice on budget meetings, where we were going to meet upstairs, discussing over $150 million of taxpayer monies, where it wasn't going to be live-fed, in a small space, where accommodations to taxpayers aren't as convenient as they are down here. I am absolutely opposed to the unnecessary meetings not happening in a space that was created for public discussion, to be accessible to all people, whether they opt to come in here, or whether they would like to sit at home after a long day at work and watching us. I just think it's unnecessary. If the weather heads, if we're under attack, we already have measures that allows us to declare an emergency and meet in other places. So, my second question is, what meeting is getting ready to come up, or we are already planning on meeting outside of here that we need the-
Strategic planning.
Okay.
Yeah, the strategic planning, which you and I have talked about.
Yes, and I, and I was kind of wondering if that was the purpose of that. So, why not bring that on the agenda at the next council meeting and publicly declare that for the strategic meeting, and get an approval of the council to have the meeting at whatever location, and notify the general public of that, and make sure that location is accommodational, both to people with disabilities, but also that we are going to have a camera up there so people can observe the, the public discussion that should be happening in a public setting. Because I can tell you, our meeting minutes aren't very comprehensive of what's happening, which is the norm and standard for meeting minutes, right? But that is why the option of a live feed gives the ability to observe what was really discussed in depth around complex issues that impact all of our constituents.
Okay, now, I'm going to take the opposite end of the perspective with you, Councilwoman. So, in my work, the, the entire state is impacted, so they do roaming meetings, if you will, with different locations being utilized. Personally, I appreciate the points that you've raised. However, I personally think that it would be kind of nice if we had the flexibility, and again, I respect, we've got posting of open meetings with Secretary of State, and amendments would be necessary potentially, et cetera, but that if we could hold council meetings at other locations. We were able to put ourselves into the municipal court. I'm thinking, for example, of space that we already have available, like the Neighborhoods in Action building, for example. Putting us where we are centrally located, in a different geographical location of the city, would afford citizens who live in that area the opportunity to walk on over, bike on over, whatever. And in particular, where we have areas of our community that may sometimes feel like they're of lesser importance or not being heard. If we were to include flexibility with regard to our meeting location, we could then be able to hold meetings in different areas of the city, such as, you know, on the, on the north end of the city. And again, we have locations that we could go to that would then, you know, hopefully encourage folks who actually live in that area to come on over for the meeting, because they don't have to drive as far or make transportation arrangements as far, et cetera.
That is still a viable option. It, it, all it requires is, you know, this is government. We are supposed to be proactive, that if the city manager determines that there is a necessity to go to another locality for a public meeting, such as our city council, that it be brought before the city council, and we declare that the next location for a council meeting, right? And the other-
Actually, no, that's incorrect. Under the current ordinance, the only time you could move off of this site, right here, right now, is if an emergency is declared.
Okay, and that's why I'm saying, if we make this change, Councilwoman, then we would have that flexibility that you're talking about, okay? And I don't think that anybody is striving with this proposal of the change to, you know, go way out of bounds with where the meeting location is going to be held or anything, but it would give us some flexibility.
I, I appreciate the flexibility, but I think it comes at cost to transparency, and, and really, let's hash down the word accessibility. Accessibility to who? To the people who expect to have a public council meeting here regularly, to show up here and see potentially a sign on the door that last-minute advises them, because they didn't read the beacon, that the meeting's been moved to another location? Accessibility to a person in wheelchairs who may show up to an alternative location that's been declared, that we didn't take the time to make sure it is accessible to someone in a wheelchair? I, I just, I don't see logical reasoning into it. This is the city council chamber. This is where the city council should convene its official meetings, unless there is an actual emergency. And if we are going to meet at an alternative location, so are you telling me, based on what Mr. Marsh said, that when we conducted our last strategic meeting at the Reed Center, that we violated the law somehow? Because that wasn't an emergency. Am I recalling something incorrectly?
That, there was an ordinance that said what it, what it currently says, and there could be considered issues with that, but we are trying to clear that up at this time.
So, we, so we didn't find a way to bypass that? We potentially violated the law and conducted a meeting at the Reed Center, and in order not to repeat that mistake, we are now changing the ordinance? Why not have the strategic meeting here, where, again, there's cameras, there's seating for the general public, and like we did for the budget meeting, we can put the tables around?
Your concerns are duly noted, and I think we beat this horse to death, so, Chair, entertain a motion.
I move to reject this based on the concept, why, we have Open Meetings Act, of transparency and accessibility. And I would also say that if this body decides to move forward with this, that this be amended to require video monitoring of the meeting that is going to be aired on our YouTube channel.
Please understand, I just want to make sure everyone's clear, that there is no constitutional requirement, as stated by the United States Supreme Court, to video, to video broadcast any public meeting by any body, any governmental body in the United States of America.
I recognize that, and I respect that, and I didn't argue that it was a constitutional requirement. However, when I sat through the open meetings seminar by the organization you all sent me to, it said, "Once this government establishes a certain pattern and practice, it has to have a valid reasoning to break away from that pattern and practice." And so, when it suggested to have budget hearing meetings up in the conference room, which is anomaly for a government, municipal government, that hosts, it's all of its regular meetings down here, where it is fed to the general public and accessible through live feed, I become concerned.
Okay, Ms. Bannon, would you like to make a motion to deny?
I made a motion to deny, but I also, and I already recognize what's getting ready to happen. So, I also appeal to this body, that if you decide to proceed with this, that you amend it so that it is live-fed to the general public and more easily accessible to those who want to observe.
Your concerns are duly noted. I have a motion on the floor. I have a motion on the floor. I have a motion and a second. Go ahead and do a real call vote.
And this is for a motion to deny? Burn.
Correct.
You're denying the denial.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Bannon?
Yes.
Favors?
Nope.
Dukes?
No. Motion fails due to a lack of unanimous vote. Chair, entertain a, a motion.
I'm going to move to approve for the reasons that I just discussed. I feel like this measure gives us flexibility, so I'm going to move to approve it.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion in a second. Do a real call vote, please.
Eads?
Yes.
Byrne?
I'm not yes, but I also want to make a statement about one of her concerns that she made about the budget meeting. I think that's, that is one meeting that I know there was some attention last year by me and upstairs. And I think that we vote yes, but that the condition that the next year's budget meeting be held down here. I understand the, the strategic plan, it gets different than the budget, but I think we call both yes with the understanding that the budget meeting needs to be down here just like it's been done.
And Pat, there was contention on that twice in a row, and had it not been for my adamant refusal, it wouldn't have been moved down here. And you and I and the city manager actually had a meeting.
We need to move.
To discuss creating a policy around this very matter.
That is supposition and not fact. You don't know to a degree of certainty what would have happened.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've got a vote in process.
You said the only reason it was moved was because of you. You don't know that.
It was hours before the meeting. It was hours before the meeting and I contacted the city.
Point of order, we need to move through the process.
Maxwell?
I was advised by the fact that it's being moved because of my request.
Yes.
Yes.
Are you, right? Okay.
And I added, my approval was.
Yep. Correct. Correct. Yep. Thompson?
Yes.
Bannon?
As a public interest advocate who recognizes and values the pillars of government transparency and government accountability, and as somebody who's had to chase down government institutions having private meetings behind backroom doors, I vote no.
Favors?
Yes.
Dukes?
Yes, motion passes. The ordinance passes. We now move into new business public discussion. I want to remind you that since there's not an agenda item concerned or attached to your discussion, we cannot discuss back and forth any issues you bring to us. But if there's an issue that's brought to us, we'll take note of it and consider it as an agenda item next council meeting. Mr. Bridges, you're the only one that's signed up.
Mr. Mayor, we can just change that to just old Bill Bridges, ten three hundred Belmont Avenue. I've sat here and I listen. I have not heard any questions. We have these contractors that goes and builds these different divisions, different houses. Let's take Post Road. Let's take south of Tenth Street. Let's take on the east side. Here they are building there. The east side of the city's right of way is condemned because you've got all this on there. Our camp, our code enforcement officer, you've got grass, weeds, that's about as tall as the old man. But since the contractor puts some dirt over, you can't climb over, so our code enforcement officer can't get nobody to take care of that. Here we are approving, and I'm totally for you. And Matt, thank you very much for inviting those seventeen young men and women. If you and I think back at seventeen, some of them looked to be seventeen, the old man raised his hand and said, I will do. For twenty-five years, I mean, twenty, over twenty years, I served this country. If I need to do it for another twenty years, the old man's eighty-four, that would make me a hundred and four, I would do it. But what I am asking, who in turn goes out because our code enforcement officers are so busy taking care of other properties? I can show you photos out in Ward Six. I am not lying. I'm five-six. The weeds is higher than me. We can't get them cut. Are they so busy? So we allow a contractor to go down. Those weeds are so high, they're going to die. The next thing you know, down on Post Road, we have a fire because somebody comes by there and throws a cigarette over. I'm asking our council members, if we don't have enough code enforcement officers to take care of Midwest City, let's hire some more. And the second thing, let's get somebody out there, and if that contractor, if Rick don't want to take care of that job and keep it according to city code, Rick, you're closed until you can do that. You are closed. Now, if you want to fix that property and maintain it according to the code that you have voted and approved, then in turn, if he don't want to do it until he does it, he is stopped. So what I'm asking the council, all these projects that we have, go out there, get somebody out there, and if they don't maintain that property according to our code, you're closed. When you do that, then you know them again. I thank you for your time. Matt, I thank you again for inviting those young men. They will be men that in turn will take care of you and I as we get much older.
Thanks, Bill, for being here.
Thank you.
Ms. Bannon has signed up. Ms. Bannon, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sarah Bannon, thirty-eight twenty-four North Bella Vista Drive. Due to the privilege of having the opportunity to observe our July council meeting, which I was not present at, there was some, there was incorrect information that was put out there in regards to my opinion to an issue related to Mid-America Park, and I wanted to make sure I put it on public record what my official position is. I think it was questioned or maybe suggested by Councilwoman Eads that maybe she had heard somewhere that I was opposed to the development of Mid-America Park. I am not opposed, and, and there was, and I think, Mayor, you went on to say that, you know, I have a right to my position, almost as if confirming that that was my position. I requested to postpone a vote in December of twenty-two, when there was an item before us to remove mass numbers of trees. Residents from the apartment complex and some of the homes there had reached out to me asking whether or not there was an order to this removal. What types of trees are we moving? How many of them? And also, if the city was going to reinvest in landscaping in return for the trees that were going to be removed. At that time, my motion to postpone that was delayed because there was a need for expediency to not deal with inflation rates of cutting the trees. I will tell you, it took almost, almost eight months, maybe a year, because the trees were actually officially removed this year. There was a second time when I post, I was successful on postponing that, and I think the vice mayor was helpful in that, because I received an agenda on Thursday with no prior notification from any city staff or anyone from the city, that reduced the scope that was promised to the taxpayers who turned out and voted for the GO bond. And as a result of that postponement, which was, I believe, earlier this year, the vice mayor and I had a meeting with Mr. Lyons and Mr. Bundy, and we were able to get more in return for the constituents and the children of Ward Five, which included the basketball court, which included the commitment of surveillance camera for security of those children in that park, and the hope for bathrooms in that park. So those were the reasons for the delay, and I, I hated the appearance that there was a suggestion that the inflation and, and the cost was somehow due to my postponing. But I will tell you, I am extremely frustrated, which I vocalized and articulated to the city manager and others, the fact that when it comes to Ward Five issues, we don't seem to be prioritized. That this Mid-America Park project, which was the vision of the previous councilwoman, was the last GO bond project to be endeavored into. And five to six years later, only to be advised by the city, now we don't have enough money to deliver the full scope, which we went around advertising to the taxpayers when we were asking them to show up to vote for that GO bond. So I just wanted to be on record in regards to what my official position is, and, and I hope the project moves forward with what has officially been put on paper, and we look forward to seeing those basketball courts. And I will tell you, as far as that, I don't even know what to call it, the disc golf course. That was not a request made by either the children or the residents of Ward Five. Mr. Bundy can probably elaborate. There was a group of out-of-town team who are, I guess, are professionals at this, who had showed up to some of our community forums and had advocated for that. So it is not my understanding what was botched from the, the most recent scope was anything that is going to impact our Ward Five residents. Thank you. It was, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Bannon. Does anyone else have anything to bring forth, council? Hearing none. We do have an executive session. I request that we take a vote to reset or adjourn from the council and move forward with the rest of the agendas. Motion to recess. Second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention of motion carries. I call it order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests that discussed item, or if unanimous consent cannot be made, then it will be moved and heard in regular order. Chair, entertain a motion.
Aye. That'll be second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention of motion carries. Discussion item, I want to remind you that most of these discussion items, we've already voted on in the previous agenda. Discussion item number one.
Mayor, could we waive the reading of those items?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Move to approve, discussion item one.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
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 Opposed? Extention of motion carries. Item number two.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention of motion carries. Item number three.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention of motion carries. New business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring forth, the authority? Hearing or seeing none. We hereby adjourn. I call it order the Midwest City Hospital Authority. Again, this consent, their consent agenda, you see the consent items. Chair, entertain a motion.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention of motion carries. Discussion items. Number one, Mr. Lyons.
So number one, we do need to take action. This is just a rebalancing to keep within our policy guidelines that we've established for the hospital authority.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention of motion carries. Item number two, we've already voted on. Entertain a motion. Got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention of motion carries. New, we new, move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring forth, the authority? Hearing or seeing none. We're hereby adjourned. I call it order the Special Economic Development Authority. We have two discussion items. One is to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Another discussion. Special economic. Yeah, that's.
Their discussion.
Their discussion. Sorry. Number one, move to approve. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention of motion carries. Number two, same one we voted on.
Second.
I've got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention of motion carries. We move into public discussion. Anybody have anything to bring forth, the authority? Hearing or seeing none. I'd entertain a motion to re.
Motion to reconvene.
Convene.
And adjourn to the executive session.
Second. Hold on.
That's for a motion to reconvene now, the executive session.
Second.
I've got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention. We are in executive session. Thank everybody for being here. Have a good night and drive safely.